I can't tell if we're started yet.
It is.
It is six o'clock.
Okay. It is six o'clock on Tuesday, October 28th, and I'm going to call this Lacey City Works session to order. Looks like we have Councilmember Downing and Councilmember Greenstein attending us remotely, and I haven't heard from Councilmember Stedman, so he may be remote as well, but all other council are present. I want to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nusquali Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I would move that we approve tonight's agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is public comment. We did receive one written public comment, and I know that was distributed to the council, and we also have one person who signed up for a public comment. If you'd like, please come to the podium over there and give your name, and let us know what you're here to talk about.
Sure. My name is Joseph Slattery. I represent the Hill Betty Business Park. It's eighty-seven and a half acres, just northwest of Britton Parkway and Marvin Road. Forty-four years ago, I was born at St. Peter's Hospital down the road here, and for the last thirty-five-plus years, we've been doing business here in the City of Lacey with my family. As I understand, you were provided a copy of the letter prepared by our team that identifies several concerns with the code amendments that staff will present before you tonight. I want to first thank staff for their responsiveness and hard work regarding our concerns. My understanding is that staff will present solutions to you regarding the warehouse issue, investing issue that we have flagged. We support staff's solutions on these fronts and request that you incorporate them in a final adoption. With respect to development agreements, our concerns are detailed in the letter, but the upshot is that we, that the purpose of a development agreement is to provide flexibility that facilitates a better project for everyone, including the city and the community, and in many cases, make a good project great. The proposed amendment removes staff and city council's authority to provide that flexibility with respect to those uses, types of uses and density. To be clear, under the current code, you, as the final decision maker on a development agreement, have the authority to make a case-by-case informed decision and a judgment on these issues. The proposed amendments remove that authority at the onset. We ask that you preserve your current flexibility and authority to make these types of important project-specific determinations on a case-by-case basis. This all is detailed in the letter provided to you in advance of tonight's meeting, but I'm happy to try to answer any of the questions that you may have on the topic as well. Again, thank you to staff for your responsiveness and work on this. We request you advance staff's proposed solutions, the warehouse use, investing issues, and please pursue our requested course of action by not amending the restrictive provisions for development agreements that currently assist in fostering flexibility and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you could, hopefully you'll stick around for this next agenda, and if we have any questions, we can address them at that time. I also want to say that my family goes back a long time with Betty. My father was really good friends with Betty years ago, and was a big supporter of my dad over the years, and so it's, that property is precious for law people, and so we hope, hopefully, you know, good projects are on their way. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Seeing none, then let's go into our main agenda items, and first up is our inner-city transit system redesign. Could see, Rob? Yeah, it's right here.
Thank you. And I assume this will just advance the slide if we need it. Perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Demarest. I am the Chief Communications Marketing Officer at Inner City Transit. I've been there almost three years, and I've got some great compatriots here with me from the organization as well, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good evening. Rob LaFontaine, Planning Deputy Director.
Spencer Zeeman, Bus Stop Coordinator.
Fantastic. And I apologize right off the bat, because several of you have seen versions of this PowerPoint several times, so we'll just assume that this is primarily for staff, as well as the thousands and thousands of Lacey residents who watch these work sessions every week. Yeah. Also say, not that I play favorites within the service area, but I am a homeowner and a resident of Lacey, the City of Lacey, since 2006, when, after we first moved down here, and really love being part of this community. And it's one of the things that I love most about working for Inner City Transit, is I get to work on issues that directly affect my community and my family. I've worked at both the state and the federal level, and it's really remarkable to be able to work on things with these fine folks and others that affects and impact service that impacts my family and my neighbors, my community. So we'll start here with a lovely photo back from the spring, and the concept that we've come up with is imagine a better bus system. And we're going to talk a little bit about the timeline and sort of what, what got us to here, and that's the first, the first slide. So, you know, thinking back to the work that we've done here at Inner City Transit back in time, if you, if you go back, back into 2016, the Inner City Transit Authority Board was facing a crisis, and our community was facing a crisis, really, as we saw, for a number of reasons, revenue for transit services within our community really start to dry up. And the, the board at the time really went out to the community with what we called the road trip at the time, to ask the community, what sort of steps do you, would you like us to take? And there were a couple different paths at that time. We could reduce service and become a smaller version of inner-city transit, or we could invest more in the community and more into inner-city transit and public transit in our community. And overwhelmingly, the organization heard, yes, more, more buses, more places, more often. And overwhelmingly, in the feedback through the road trip, which was really conducted over a considerable period of time with a lot of different opportunities for feedback, they, the community asked for what they were calling a transformative transit system, and that was a really exciting thing to hear. And so that led, then, to the creation of Proposition One back then, and Proposition One basically added an additional authority. There was also a commensurate move that had to be made at the state legislature to allow for that authority, but then through a vote of the people, we were able to achieve an additional investment in transit here in our community. And that was a really remarkable thing, and I believe the final vote was like sixty-seven percent passed, which, you know, is really kind of encouraging as you think about this community, and sixty-seven percent of people in our community really wanted to invest in transit and mobility in our community and getting people around. As that conversation with the community happened and as they collected sort of information, they, they came up with these nine promises and these proposed improvements that were made and intended to be made for the community through the, the investment that was being made in inner-city transit and, and transit system within our community. And I won't go through and read them, but these should be pretty, pretty familiar to you, and we'll talk more about several of these as we go through. And, oh, I shortened this up in, out of the courtesy, courtesy to folks who have seen it many times, but I always, I usually have a slide here that says COVID changed everything because that passed back in 2018. All the investments started, all the money flew, started to flood in, or additional, additional revenues coming to the organization. The board was trying new innovative things, including the launch of Zero Fair as an innovative fare structure. It's important to note that that wasn't one of the nine promises that was made to the community. The, the conversation in that was, we needed to look at innovative fare structures because we were facing, as an organization, a pretty massive investment in new fare collection system. And so through some study, we realized that somewhere between two and three percent of, of the operating revenue for the organization, when you backed all the costs of collecting money, the, the, the organization was really only receiving about two to three percent of its revenue from fares. And that, up against a potentially six, seven million dollar investment in a new fare collection system, didn't make a whole lot of sense. And so the Zero Fair pilot was started, it was started in January of 2020, perfect timing, and then everything changed, and a lot of things got placed on hold. And for a lot of reasons, we've been sort of building back, and, you know, Rob's, Rob's been here through that whole process. I don't know that he necessarily wants to go back into those places in his brain to remember what we had to do, but I wasn't here, but I understand the amount of pivoting innovation, trying to get people where they needed to get, especially people who were in sort of critical situations, was really miraculous. But it meant that a lot of those improvements had to be placed on hold. And so we had sort of made these promises to the community of invest in us, and we will deliver, and then wait, we got to wait a little while until we can get back. And so really rebuilding that included getting us back up to the number of operators that we needed to, to achieve. You know, like many places, we saw a bunch of retirees, retirements from our operators, as well as how did we build capacity within the system to be able to get to a place where we could actually start to deliver on some of the things that we had offered to the community. And so the Zero Fair pilot has also been extended through 2028, as we, as we look at that and the impacts of that to our community, and that's a whole different presentation we could give, but, but we're really starting to move forward on some of these things. And one of the ways that we are now ready finally to be able to deliver on this is this massive system redesign. And this map really probably only makes sense to Rob and Spencer, because I tell you, if you put our current map over the top of this one and then squinted at it, it would be difficult to tell the difference. And part of that is because we already do a pretty good job of running service down most of the roads that make sense to run service down in our community, with some notable exceptions that we'll talk about as we go through the presentation. But this system redesign is really centered around a few core principles, investing in corridors. And so looking at ways that we can really invest in those high-traffic corridors, get people who are transit-dependent where they need to go, and connect people better, better connectivity, particularly for our area high schools, the Capitol, some of those key places that we've identified in our community that people need to get to, and through some one-seat rides and some innovative planning, we've achieved some of that, and then expanding service and access throughout the community. And so thinking about that, the corridor, so, you know, right now, I sort of describe, our, our current system is really kind of a hub-and-spoke system. And so if you consider the Lacey Transit Center, the Olympia Transit Center, and then Capitol Mall, most buses sort of make their way there, and then they go back out from there through, in our community. And that is fine, and it's served us well in this community, but what it, it really creates a lot of out-of-direction travel for folks, and that adds time. Time means that it's less convenient for folks, and those choice riders, people who maybe have a chance to drive a car instead, will tend to continue to drive their automobiles. So finding ways that we can increase frequency and get more people where they need to go by investing in a corridor approach really makes a lot of sense. And so the idea here is this corridor, which really runs from, you know, the Lacey Costco over to Capitol Mall, is really a, a really critical area for us, and this is where we're also seeing traffic signal prioritization and the incredible partnership we've seen with, you know, we've achieved with the City of Lacey and other investments to try to really drive a lot of frequency down this corridor. This is also, if you look at the, the satellite view, where a whole bunch of housing is being built within walking distance of this corridor, and a lot of that affordable housing in our community. So we know that a disproportionate amount of our transit-dependent riders live within these areas as well, and so we really want to invest and make that system great for them, because if it's great for them, it's great for everybody. One of the other really great elements of this redesign, and College Street is where I live, and we were just talking about College Street, Spencer lives there, and Sue does too as well. Right now, the 64 is the bus that serves College Street. It is a wonderful route, but it is somewhat of a meandering route, no offense, Rob, that sort of makes its way down College Street and then sort of meanders back through Olympia, down through some neighborhoods to get downtown. But because of that, the 64 really only runs every thirty minutes up and down College, and anybody who drives down College knows how much is happening on College, how much we need to lessen the dependence on cars through there, move more people. We're also seeing incredible investment in that, in that area within our community as well. And so rather than just taking a 64 and running it every fifteen minutes, which really doesn't meet the needs, Rob and the team have really designed some shared frequency within the system. And so this way, we can run two bus routes that overlap, and when they get to the end of College, one will go left, one will go right, and if you look at the map, you can find out sort of where those go from there. But that then results in fifteen-minute frequency on this primary corridor, because those buses are overlapping. So if you really only need to go from the Lacey Transit Center down to the Lowes at the end of, now, that's probably a bad example, you'd probably just go to the Lowes on the other side of the freeway. But if you wanted to go somewhere down College Street corridor, it kind of doesn't matter which of these two buses you grab, because you're going to be able to get down there every fifteen minutes. Anything you want to add on that? Or maybe some other examples in the community where we've done, where we're doing this?
Rob, can you hit your mic, please? Thank you.
The Capitol, Capitol Way, Capitol Boulevard corridor is another area that, if you're familiar with the system, Route 13 kind of dominates that corridor. We're still going to keep our Route 13, dial its frequency back, but as Nick has described, overlay some additional routes on it to provide some shared frequency there. We're still going to keep our Route 13, dial it frequency back, but as Nick has described, overlay some additional routes on it to provide some shared frequency there. Point over on the west side. So yeah, there's a few different locations where we're kind of deploying this strategy.
So this is the strategy and, and philosophy, right? Where you're having two buses overlap, so you get 15 minutes. What is it in, in reality? Is it, are you hitting that pretty close? Because obviously the buses are going off and there's a whole bunch of things that can interact actually to make sure you're actually getting 15 minutes.
You want to start with on-time performance?
Well, so the schedule is the backbone to all of this and we're preparing those schedules right now. It's still, it's a lot of puzzle making to bring all that together. But we've already been able to confirm that College Street, basically because we can control when buses are leaving the Lacey Transit Center, kind of meter them down College Street to ensure that 15 minute. There are other locations, maybe along Yelm Highway, where routes are overlapping, where they're not going to be 15 minutes apart, might be, you know, 10 and 20 minutes, things of that nature. But so as the schedule, you know, is, is coming together, we're, we're able to design it in ways that are purposeful.
We'll also mention, this is a problem when you look at like our commuter routes up to Lakewood. I know if you've been driving northbound on a Friday afternoon, you'll sometimes see those buses stacked up and you're like, well, those are supposed to be running every 30 to 45 minutes. Why are there three within a mile? Traffic is obviously a determining factor there. But one of the other great things that we've learned about our zero fare pilot is fare disputes are actually the number one reason for operator assaults in bus systems. And so that's an important thing that we consider as those tragedies are happening all over our country. But it's also one of the number one reasons that buses run late. If you've ever gotten on a bus where there's a big line of people digging around for change, their, their card doesn't tap right, doesn't work, and the bus has to wait, that's a quick way to get buses off schedule as well. And so the fact that we can board through both doors on and off, and Spencer can always talk about some of the bus stop improvements we're doing to make that even more efficient, that really helps us out.
And as a plug too, it really reduces our dwell time when we're at a stop. We can keep those dwell times probably within 10 seconds or so.
Yeah. So one of the other really cool attributes of this redesign is one-seat rides. And so again, how do you get more service out of the same number of buses? One of the ways you do it is you have buses sort of run their route and, and turn into another bus. And so, and some of that has really been designed about how do we connect high, area high school kids to the places they need to go, primarily SBSCC and other areas within the community. And so Rob and the team really tried to take a look at that and figure out how you can get folks from these area high schools over to SBSCC, even if they don't have, even if it's two different bus routes, they don't have to get off the bus and change buses. And some of that may, may be where the bus route sort of ends, maybe at like the Tumwater Safeway. And then the number on the front of the bus changes and then it does its other, its other half in, in the scheduling that's been designed there. And so it's a really innovative way to be able to get people where they need to go. It can be a little confusing, so we're going to utilize technology, planning tools, trip planning tools to be able to let people know they don't have to get off and look for that other bus while that bus then drives away. But that is a really important way to be able to get people where they need to go. On a related note, you know, one of the things that we really heard through the customer comments that we receive, you know, we, we literally receive hundreds and hundreds of customer comments every year from the community. But one of the things that we continue to hear is need, better need for connectivity for high school students. The school buses do an incredible job of getting kids from their house to the school and home at the end of the day. But I have a 16-year-old, I'll tell you, she almost never follows that schedule. Kids go to SBSCC, they go to grandma's house, they go to work, they do extracurricular activities. And so finding ways that we can better connect our area high schools to their local community and then into that corridor and then some of those hubs is really critical. And so you can see up on the board here, one of the areas of new service that we're providing is the link up Slater Kinney over to 15th. With the improvements that have been made in that area, it really started to make sense to be able to run some service up there. You know, right now, if you are a North Thurston High School student and you want to catch an intercity transit bus, you have to walk over to Martin Way in front of the, in front of the Lowes. This will provide service right there on Slater Kinney that will then plug them into the Lacey Transit Center, into the corridor, be able to make those on-street transfers much more efficiently. We're also seeing some, some new connectivity down Henderson on the backside into Tumwater, a really critical link over on the west side in Olympia up Black Lake Boulevard. I didn't even think about the fact that we don't run service on Black Lake Boulevard right now, it's just such a busy corridor. But that's a really critical link for us as well. And then some other nips and tucks up in northeast Lacey and southeast Lacey to be able to provide great connectivity and service out there within that service area as well. So we have a dedicated webpage on our website, Imagine a Better Bus System. On there, you have a number of really great assets for folks, including sort of a timeline of how we're doing this. The way, the way that we've sort of talked about it, phase one happened last May. Phase one was really build capacity within the current system. And so that was add more drivers, add more service hours, expand hours, increase frequency where we can. Phase two happened in September with the launch of our new commuter routes. And so that's the 600 and the 620, taking, I'm sorry, 610, the Lacey Connector and the express service up to, up to Lakewood. That was taking our old 620 service and really breaking it into more of a local service that'll connect multiple places in Lacey before going up to Lakewood, including a stop at the Madigan Gate or the Berkeley Gate. Which one is it? Madigan Gate, thank you. Had it right the first time, shouldn't have questioned myself. Which is really great for our military families that need to be able to access the base and they can connect to other services up there. So that happened in September to great acclaim and fanfare. And then the big, the big thing really happens in May. And so it is, it is a complicated system and the, the reason, with a bunch of interdependencies. And the reason we could pull the commuter service out and do that in September is it sort of stands apart and separate. Once you start changing a bunch of these other routes, you really can't, yeah, it's better to do them all at once because you just can't, you got to rip that Band-Aid off all at once. I've described it as sort of a late-stage Jenga game, right? It's the sort of house of cards, if you'd rather, it's the complicated system. But that allows us to get ready to make this big change. There's going to be a lot of outreach that will start with, with things like this, coming out and making sure folks are aware of it. Where of the resources, we're actually having our first open house next Monday down at the Olympia Transit Center, just inviting people in. The, the formal adoption of the service change and the equity analysis will happen at our board meeting next week. And so we wanted folks, I'm sorry, next month, next, next week? Or the public hearing starts next week. Thank you, thank you. Got to keep my dates straight. But we wanted folks to make sure that they knew what they were sort of writing public comment on, on that plan before we get to a place where the authority board is asked to make that formal. But so on this webpage, you can also see, if you go to the, the redesigned map, you can pull up an interactive planning tool that we use to be able to take a look at what that routing looks like. It'll also describe frequency and some other information as folks think about that.
There's some layers of boundaries that shows not only our service boundary, you can look at, at city boundaries, so city of Lacey, for example. High school attendance boundaries is another layer you can toggle on and off. Population, employment.
Is there, is there a route that goes from Slater Kinney and 15th up through to Britton Parkway? Or is it just a route that comes from Carpenter Road and takes a right onto Britton Parkway?
That's that new service up 15th, right?
Correct. Part of our design for, for May includes that new service that would come up Slater Kinney, travel east on 15th, and then continue to Britton Parkway. And then to Marvin.
And then the, it looks like the Madigan Gate is going to be closing pretty soon. Is that, how's that going to affect the ridership from the park and ride here to, to that location?
So our service essentially won't change. That, what we're doing with our new Route 610 is a, is a connection with the Pierce Transit Route 206. And that's the bus that actually enters the base itself. And so the Pierce Transit 206 is going to be on a detour. So we're still going to have a connection at, at the Berkeley stop with the Pierce Transit 206. Then that bus will be on detour to get into the base via the logistics gate.
Yeah, backside. So this is a little bit what we were talking about with the phases. This is now phase three, the biggie. You know, we were sort of doing some of the stakeholder work that we were doing, really crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and looking at these things and really challenging some of the decisions that were made to get to a final product for recommendation to the board. Now we are in the, this outreach phase of letting folks know about the formal public hearing and, and comment period and formal adoption of the service change that will happen then with the final adoption there on the third. And then from January through, you know, the day before service change, it is all information everywhere, all at once, all the time. So we are looking at some of our partner agencies who've done major service changes and learning from them around, you know, real retail engagement with folks out on the platforms at the transit centers, setting up tables, carrying around iPads, a lot of different accessibility features built into some of these planning tools to be able to help folks. And then we've actually done an advanced trip planner model on our website as well. And so once that file is uploaded, folks will be able to go into the future and put in, say, I want to go from here to here, the date after the service change takes place. And it'll actually pull from the new file. And so they'll be able to see what that, that route looks like compared to their current route, which is a really fantastic service to be able to provide folks. Inevitably, this will, this will be different for everyone, they'll experience it differently. But we, we really believe this is a really incredible deployment of the resources that we have available to us for our community to be able to get folks around.
Under bus stop construction, can you talk a little bit about that? Is there going to be new stops that we don't know about yet?
Yeah.
So currently, we are workshopping that right now internally. We have a committee set up and we're going to be doing onsite field surveys. We have 140 locations that we've identified for additional service throughout the PTBA. And then that's going to plus or minus based on the onsite survey, whether we determine that's a safe or feasible location or not. But right now, we're anticipating that we're going to go forward with that. Additionally, we have a contract with WSP, which is not Washington State Patrol, it's a consulting firm that is working on our corridor study there. And as part of that, we're going to be offering up to three what we would call BRT or Bus Rapid Transit Light stations, which will be distinctive. They will be larger, they will be noticeable, and they'll be much more welcoming, they'll have real-time signage, they'll have additional features, and they'll be lighted and have power. And what we're hoping to achieve with that is getting those choice riders, those people who are saying, you know what? It's only going to take five minutes more to hop on that bus and I know it comes by at this specific interval, so I can rely on that. And, and so I think that's going to help start plant that seed in the community. And when they start to see that investment, that, that will grow that interest in that corridor. And it also lines up with another route that we have, the 50, which is the slower, more community-oriented route that goes up to the hospital as well as northeast Lacey and the Hawk Prairie Park and Ride. And so by hitting additional areas along the way, it's giving people access to those different connections and high-value locations as well as just that main east-west corridor going through Thurston.
So this circles back to some of the different Prop One elements that we identified earlier on and sort of lays that out again against the different phases of our implementation, as well as some of the initiatives that we have ongoing. The one sort of developing element there is that night owl service. Currently, we have an agreement with Evergreen where we do provide night owl service out there under contract with Evergreen. I think we are looking for better ways to expand service, but I will say with this upcoming service change, most of these lines are going to run till 11, 10, 11 o'clock depending on service areas. And that was really designed to be able to allow somebody to ride the bus down to the Washington Center for an event and still get home safely. That was a limiting factor for us when we had service a little bit more limited. You'll also notice the next stop logo up in the upper left-hand corner. This is really a identifying mark that we've developed to identify all the elements of the Prop One promises and things that we're reinvesting in the community and start to tie those pieces together for the community of us fulfilling those, those commitments that were made with that additional investment. And I think we've hit the end for questions, so happy to answer any you may have.
What's the mobile app? I, I should know this, I was trying to look at my phone, is it from here to there or what is it?
Yeah, so the mobile apps, there's a long storied history of mobile apps within the system. And so the, the one that we, is provided by one of our computer systems is called My Stop. And that was something that we promoted for a while. There was also the One Bus Away app that's actually, comes out of King County. At this point, there are so many other great systems that have been developed, like the Transit app, so many people use Apple Maps and Google Maps. Our, our system is really designed to be able to provide that real-time information up to the cloud and out to all these providers, sort of all at once, all the time. And so at this point, we're really encouraging folks to use whatever app you're comfortable with because they're all running off sort of the same information.
So what, what, what are the main apps then?
Yeah, primarily Google Maps. And I would say the Transit app has made great strides. That is, the Transit app is, they've done some really cool gamification as well, you can earn badges and, you know, other things. But they've also got some really innovative sort of multimodal approaches where if you say you're willing to ride your bike to a place and then do, and then do some of that. Yeah, including ride share, Uber. Google Maps is also a great, a great system as well. Yeah, those are the ones that, that we're sort of promoting.
Could you share a little bit about the new bus ambassadors program and maybe a little bit about bus buddies as well in terms of how this may help the transition along?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So our goal is that anyone that needs help figuring out how to ride the bus is going to get that help. And if that, that's a spectrum, right? Where somebody maybe just needs help figuring out the timetable, but somebody else may need somebody to actually go to their house, pick them up, and ride the bus with them. And our goal through both partnerships with some different organizations and the staff and technology that we have onboard is to provide that continuum of service. And so the transit ambassadors are really intended to be more, more voices and helpers out in the community, on the buses, at the, at the transit centers, identified by their transit ambassador shirts and really be those connection points for the community. Bus Buddies is a great partnership that we do with Catholic Community Services and it is really that retail. If you need that help and assistance, they will go to your house, plan your trip, and ride the bus with you until you get comfortable doing that. And then all across the spectrum in between, we provide service. And so our customer service folks are always available during business hours and weekend hours to be able to answer questions. They are a wonderful asset. And then we're trying to figure out ways to make our online technology and information better and better. There's a whole bunch of folks who just would rather die than pick up the phone and actually call somebody, so we need to make the website work about as well as you can. But, but, you know, there's some good innovation happening there as well. But yeah, that's what, when I talk about, you know, our, our theory of communication, it's, you know, the right information to the right people at the right time, in the right way, that they are used to receiving that information. And that means that we have to hit everybody where they are.
Thank you.
Is your, do you still have a dial lift program? Is there going to be any improvements or anything to, to that as well?
Yeah, so our paratransit service, which here in Thurston County is called Dial Lift, that is for folks that the, the fixed route bus system just doesn't work for, for reason of disability. And there are some sort of thresholds that you have to meet to be able to receive that service. And that's a sort of door-to-door service that we provide. That is required to be provided within a certain boundary of our fixed route service. And so when we expand service into new areas, that dial lift service boundary expands as well. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the maps that Nick shared earlier was, you know, there's, there's new segments of service and we talked about, you know, 15th Avenue, for example. So yeah, under federal regulation, three-quarter of a mile is the buffer. So when the service takes effect on Sunday, May 3rd, there'll be a three-quarter of a mile buffer around all these new service areas. And that defines the dial lift boundary. So yeah.
I know my, my mom unfortunately had suffered a major stroke and, you know, was such an independent person to having to become now completely dependent. And dial lift was one of those things that, you know, you just don't realize until you're completely dependent on, on someone else to, for a ride like that. And so I really, you know, appreciated that, that service. Otherwise, my mom's mom will always call me and say, hey, I need a ride to such and such place. I guess turnaround is fair play, I always did that when I was a teen there, so, but yeah, it was a huge, huge service for them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, every time we do a community event like the, the Lacey Spring Fun Fair or some other community event, somebody inevitably comes up to me and says, my, my mom's dial lift driver was her best friend the last six months of her life. We, we have partnered to follow plows to dialysis appointments. We, we have partnered to follow plows to dialysis appointments in snowstorms. I mean, really, like, chilling things, you know, goosebump-giving things in that service that we provide to the community. So, and then inevitably, I have somebody who comes up at the booth and says, ah, buses, I'll never ride one, never, never ridden one, never will. And it's like, well, you never know.
Never know.
Right? And you may end up in a situation where you need either our fixed route service, or Dial Lift, or we also have our Village Van service, our walk-and-roll programs, I mean, just across the board, we, we provide a real plethora of incredible services to this community, and folks are always impressed at that span.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have seen this presentation more than once, but I'm glad to.
You can give it next time if you want.
I'll sit over there. I just wanted to say, I am one of those people, like the choice riders, where I, you know, when I was working in downtown Olympia, I always did the calculation, like, would it be better to drive, or would I like to ride the bus, or should I ride my bike? And before these improvements today, getting from my house to downtown Olympia on a bus would take 30 to 40 minutes. And I can bike down the Chehalis Trail actually faster than that. Well, but if the weather's poor, I would just choose to drive my single occupancy vehicle, of course. But if service could get me from here to downtown in 15 minutes, that would be a much easier choice for someone who always runs short on time. So I'm excited about this, I'm also really excited about the night owl service, because that's something I've been hoping for, for a long time, and I know it's been in the works, but now you've got enough drivers, you can actually staff the buses to do that night owl service.
Yeah, it'll be wonderful. I'm, I'm the same way, and I will often, you know, if it's a beautiful summer day, I will ride my bike downtown, down to OTC, do a bunch of meetings down there. And if it gets really hot in the afternoon, I might throw the bus, my, my bike on the front of the 64 and ride that bus home. So really, having that flexibility, and, you know, what we decided in the, in the redesign, that by investing in the corridors like we are, it's really serving our transit-dependent riders first with span and frequency, but span and frequency benefits everyone, right? And so you start to buy more people into the system. Now, are we ever going to, you know, run bus service out to some rural road and, you know, very few people? Probably not. So there are people that, you know, for one reason or another, probably it's too expensive to buy them into the system with service. But that's okay, because the other thing that I tell people in the community when they say they don't benefit from the bus is, every one of our buses takes cars off the road in front of you, right? We, we are by design a climate change combat strategy of reducing the number of single occupancy vehicles. And it doesn't always work for everybody to ride the bus, but for people who need it and people who want to use it, we'll be there.
All right, we're on a trajectory to surpass 5 million annual boardings, which is wow.
Amazing for our community.
New, big number.
So for those of us who don't know and aren't familiar with night owl service, can you just, is that, is there, is there a timeline, or like a?
Do you want to talk a little bit?
So, legacy service has been this agreement with Evergreen State College, that on, throughout the school year, on Friday and Saturday nights, or I guess it'd be early Saturday and Sunday mornings, bus service would continue to run between Evergreen State College campus and downtown Olympia. That's really been the extent of our late-night service for the past, you know, few years.
Until about 4:00 AM.
Yeah, yeah, about that.
I think it's like 3:00 and 3:30, depending on which direction you're going.
Right. And so essentially, it's taking that idea and kind of building upon it, so that there would be more transportation options. One of the things that really kind of has my interest is, given the advancements in technology, the ability to look at on-demand service, or what they call micro-transit, which is essentially the Uber bus, that it's not limited to a fixed route per se, but rather a geographic area.
I will say, I did the block party last year at Evergreen, and when we first brought back the, the Night Owl, and the students were really excited about it. They don't call it the Night Owl, they call it the Drunk Bus. And we, we don't endorse calling it the Drunk Bus. But I will say, if folks are going out and are engaging in social activities that may make it unsafe for them to drive home, I would much rather they ride our bus home. They still have to follow the same rules that everybody else does for decorum and behavior, but, but I think that that's an important service that we can provide in our community as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. I also want to thank Councilmember Cox to remind me that our, the Vice Chair of the Transit Authority is here, Soup here, so thank you for being here tonight as well. Okay, thank you, guys.
I have two stickers left, they've been a hot
I'll take the other one. Okay. Next up on our agenda is our construction project update.
Hello.
I am Deandra Buchanan, I'm the Engineering Construction Manager, and along with Ashley Smith, the Design Manager, we're going to give you the construction update. This one, right? There we go. So we're going to start off with recently completed construction. That photo up there shows the Terry Cargo Reservoir, that has been recently completed. The EV charging stations has been done, Marvin Road Utility Relocations, a Manhole Rehab Project, 8th Avenue Rehabilitation, the 400 Pressure Zone, and the Woodland Creek Bridge Replacement have all been completed in the last six months since the last time I came and presented. So just going to go over a few of them, starting off with the EV charger stations. One type 3 charger was installed at City Hall and also the Community Center. Two type 2 chargers were installed at City Hall and one at the library. One type 2 charger was installed at North Thurston School District Admin Building, and they just needed our construction experience to help them put that in. Next project that has been completed in the last six months is the 8th Avenue Rehabilitation Project. The location of this road is off of Sleater Kenny, heading west between a bank and a donut shop. It leads to the City of Lacey Chamber of Commerce. The contract scope for this project was to perform complete reconstruction where necessary, add storm drain improvements, including a new valley gutter, and place new striping. So you can see in the photos that just, this is just a before and after from one, looking at one location. And then second slides here show a little more of what was happening. We have some alligator cracking in that left-side photo beforehand. That hand, we have the new roadway surface in the right-hand photo with the new valley gutter, as you can see off to the right. Another project that's been recently completed was the 400 Pressure Zone. We installed 3,100 lineal feet of 12-inch diameter water main. We installed sewer relocation and street reconstruction in Pacific Avenue Southeast, otherwise known as State Route 510. Work included, of course, new striping, and this was all done at night, per WashDOT restrictions on us. So just some photos that show, like, when the contractor put together the pipeline, they put it up together in advance, and then they just moved it in pieces into the trench line. You can see a trench line being dug right there and, and at night. And then again, the asphalt was also paved that same night, as per WashDOT restrictions. Very fun project that's been completed recently is the Woodland Creek Bridge Replacement. As far as we could tell, the original bridge was built sometime in the 1980s. After the bridge was removed and the concrete footings replaced, the bridge was put together much like an erector set. So if you look at that left-hand photo, that's what shows the new concrete footings had been placed with the backfill. That center photo actually shows you what the pieces looked like when they were originally delivered, and even though we didn't get a contractor photo of him installing it, he just put it together like Legos, is literally how it was put together. So we have a before and after picture. New sides of the bridge were, for pedestrian safety, were added, you can see that up there, as well as the chain link fencing and the new asphalt leading to the deck. The bridge is open October 22nd.
So no more jumping off the bridge?
No more jumping off the bridge, yes.
This is, I saw a YouTube video on this one.
Yes.
Was that, I, I, that was the first time I stumbled on it, and I, that was the first time I had seen a YouTube video on, on a, on like, you know, a Capitol project, or at least, you know, stumbled on one. Is that, is that something you guys are going to do on a regular basis?
We have parts to thank for that.
Our communications team is looking at trying to do some more short videos for highlighting projects and things like that, and produce and push out to the public when we finish projects like this.
Yeah, had quite a few views.
And now you can drive a car across that?
No, there's a bollard.
Okay.
The bollard is
But it's wide.
The bollard is
Parts made, yeah, parts made, equipment, emergency vehicles can go across.
Yeah, and the other one, you couldn't.
You're not supposed to, yes.
This is rated for vehicle traffic, for maintenance and emergency access.
All right, so we're going into projects under construction currently. There are 16 projects listed on this slide. Of the 16, three are in suspension, they're waiting for materials, I could go over, I'm just, we're waiting for pumps, things like that. I mean, the generators take a long time to come in as well. And also, you wouldn't think this, but the poles that go up for lighting take a really long time to come, to be created. Both of the well projects that are listed there are also in suspension until early next year per the contract requirements, and the remaining projects that are in here are in various stages of activity. We won't go over all of them, but we will give you some highlights. The first one is the College Street Northeast Extension Project. This is just standing in the middle of 6th Avenue, looking one way and the other. You could, you would look by this, that of course this roadway is complete, we do have a full-depth pavement, and of course, striping has been completed on this section of roadway. So for the most part, that, that portion is complete. This photo shows off to the left is a sidewalk panel that's been replaced, that used to have a tree there that was uplifted, and they do intend on replacing the tree when the time comes, because trees, there's something about trees needing to go to sleep, I'm actually not quite sure. But they were replaced also to install water and sewer stubs. So there is some work to be done on 6th. Looking south down College Street Northeast, a court, the College Street portion between Martin Way and the current curve into 6th Avenue is completely paved and striped as well. There is a new road configuration, which includes a bike lane on both sides of College Street Northeast. Eventually, there will be a bike lane on both sides of College through 15th from Martin So these pictures depict the future T intersection. It looks like a mess, but it is, the contractor's currently working on the piece of roadway between the match point at the future T intersection of 6th Avenue and College. A piece between, excuse me, 6th Avenue and 15th is also being worked on. The grade of the roadway has to come down about two and a half feet from its existing location and matched back both into 6th and College. If you look on the left side, you can actually see a transformer that's on a concrete pad in that left photo, and that kind of gives you an idea of where the future roadway is going to be, just a little bit, so that there is a dip that has to, that road, it literally has to come all the way down. As part of the project, the contractor was allowed to close the road between 6th and 8th Avenue through the end of the year. A new piece of water main, storm drain lines, and retaining walls are all being installed in that section of roadway.
So, right now, you go down College Street, and there's a, there's a curve, right? And then, but the future, this can go straight. So is there going to be a stop sign, and then you keep going, or how's that going to?
So College is going to be a straight-throughway.
Yeah.
And then 6th Avenue is a T, yes, there's going to have a dedicated left turn lane, and then a dedicated right turn lane, because those are the only directions you can go on 6th, onto College.
Sure.
And 6th Avenue will be stop-controlled coming on the College.
Correct, just with a stop sign.
Stop-controlled?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. And then, I didn't mention that that right-hand picture is basically looking at the T intersection, those big excavators you see there are installing the wall, the retaining wall that's along that edge of the roadway.
This is a project that's been going on for as long as I remember. I mean, I remember going to Schnuck Middle School right there and seeing a future road project coming, so that was a long time ago. So yeah, this has been a long, long coming project.
Yes, at least 20 years.
At least.
What's the anticipated completion date?
Anticipated completion date, the contractor has until the middle of next summer. If we're, it depends on weather, that's really what it really depends on. I mean, they would love to finish if we have a good paving window earlier than that, like maybe March-ish, but we really have to, it just depends on when they can pave.
But we're done paving for the year, right, for the most part?
Um, you know, the contractors are able to bring it in every once in a while, so there are times where you're going to see some paving done, if the grades are right. Yes, they will. We have a few contractors up north that are actually doing some, planning on doing some paving. And I'll show you in a little bit, hopefully, we're hoping, anyway. So continuing on with projects under construction, we all know about Greg Cujo Park. This slide shows the aerial photo of the before, and of course, the recent construction, you can see between February and September. Starting off with a blank slate, the project included the placement of an 82-stall parking lot, an ADA-accessible playground, a picnic shelter, and an 18-hole disc golf course. All right, some photos for Cujo. The city has been working with the Disc Golf, Disc Golf Course Group, who has added temporary disc golf baskets and tees. That photo off to the left actually has one in the middle, I know the shading is really hard to see, but there is one in that photo. And the photo off to the right shows one of the crossroads of what we call a hard-service trail. There are approximately four miles of trails like this located throughout the park in that vegetative and forested area that you see in that photo. And then this last picture for Cujo, I want you to show you the shelter as of yesterday. So the background, you can see the playground off to the right-hand side of this photo, in the very back, you can actually see the playground. The contractor still has grading work to be done. There are several trees that have to be removed as part of the contract requirements, and some plantings that will take place next year. We anticipate the grand opening of this park to be sometime in the spring, so, just so you all know.
And when you say grand opening, will that, will the disc golf course be ready by then? Because I know they just sort of have scoped some of it out, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen.
Correct. And one of the things that we anticipate is that when the contractor takes down some of the trees, we do want them to be able to use some of the chips. And so they're, you know, we're trying to work with them to try to plan if they can go out there with their own volunteer groups and do some of that work that you're describing, to be able to make those areas where they're going to be.
Because I know we got some help on some professional design of that course, too, so it's going to be real exciting.
The next project that is currently under construction is the 2025 Sideway, Sidewalk Repair Project. That map off to the right shows six general area sites throughout the City of Lacey. The scope of this project is to replace approximately 45,000 square feet of sidewalk panels that have been lifted due to tree root growth, creating an offset between panels. And that's just a, that one off to the left shows you a very small example of an offset that's greater than an inch. It doesn't look like that, but that's an inch offset right there. Letters were either hand-delivered to the majority of the property owners or emailed to the HOA representatives slash management companies. Included in those letters was a guide to help property owners know how to take care of the future trees. The work started in October with cutting the trees down to the stumps. The amount of time the contractor has for this project is May of 2026, if they reuse all 160 days, and that doesn't even include weather days. That project includes placing a new root barrier along the sides of the installed new trees, and of the 270 trees removed and replaced, some will be maintained by the city, some will be maintained by the HOAs, and some will be maintained by the property owners.
Just a quick question there. I know, well, first of all, thank you for this sidewalk repair and construction project. It's something I think is extremely important for so many people who are really dependent on our sidewalks as their transportation network, and so many people don't realize how, how many people are dependent on that. So thank you for this. Obviously, no one likes to see a bigger tree cut down, and we've cut down quite a few, and hopefully out of necessity, right? Was there, you know, we've received some letters about saying, hey, there's some alternatives you guys could have done instead of cutting down this tree. Can you address that? Is there, was there, was there financially feasible alternatives, or what's, what was, what's our policy on, on that?
So, in a lot of cases, the City of Lacey can't use, for example, pavers. Pavers can't be used because the tree roots are going to grow into the pavers eventually. We are trying to look at these things like long-term solutions. Root barriers are only good for so many years. Root barriers are only good for so many years. The tree roots will grow under the root barriers and eventually grow under the sidewalk. They're just not, it's just not, the tree's gonna do what it's gonna do, right? So when people suggest pavers, we can't do that either because the tree roots are gonna grow into the pavers, that's one example. Rubber surfacing, which was another suggestion, is not ADA compliant. And if we were to, like, try to move a sidewalk, we would have to look into the cost of trying to purchase the right-of-way, and a lot of homes, in front of a lot of homes, to move the sidewalk from its current location. And we have a lot of design projects that are trying to do that exact thing, and you're gonna see a lot of right-of-way costs that are going to do that exact thing, so we can offset the sidewalk, you know, from the roadway, just to be safe. So those are just some examples of the things, such as, the cost is already going to be, you know, we are doing the most efficient thing for the city of Lacey, and we cannot leave the trees and cut the roots off. We don't feel that is a safe way to try to, or leave the tree, because we know the roots are gonna be cut once we take the sidewalk panel out.
One, one thing that's concerned me, and I understand, you know, that some trees will have to go, but in recent years, we've had, like, trees planted along College Street only to find out they weren't appropriate for the setting because they were already lifting roots. So, how can you assure the council that the new trees that are gonna go in have been thoroughly vetted and have roots that are more likely to grow down than out and up? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, we have two arborists that, private consultant arborists that are on, on staff for us that we hire to consult on this. We've looked at a lot of research of different trees, tree types. We have multiple staff at the city of Lacey who are actually certified arborists that have, you know, told us also, like, these are the best trees that we could possibly try to use. And that's why in the current guidelines, you have a specific tree should only be planted in a certain width of a planter, right? So in a four-foot wide planter, only specific trees are allowed now. Six-foot, eight-foot, ten-foot, et cetera, only specific trees are, are allowed to be planted in those areas, just by, you know, us looking at that tree type in, in just the other areas and other cities that have planted these trees, and the natural growth of those trees and those roots. One thing we do need to look on a little bit closer is soil types. And so, that's huge, and making sure, you know, those root barriers are installed properly. Because if the root barriers aren't installed properly too, that'll go over the root barrier under the sidewalk. There are a lot of other issues that we're trying to deal with, with that, so.
Let me ask a follow-up.
Go ahead.
So I remember my days on the planning commission, we have a street tree guide, a plan. Is that being updated?
Good for the flat. Yeah, that's, that's constantly being updated and through Development Review Section and Public Works and administering that street tree guide. Because as Scott said, part of the, you, you get the best information you have at the time, and that can change over time because trees are, are living things and they may do different elements. So looking at cotavorous planting settings and the soil types is, is a big issue because if you have certain type of soils, trees are still gonna try to find water and find roots, so they may, even you may have the right tree in the right location, those soil types may also affect how that works. But that is constantly, that is being looked at frequently.
Thank you.
There was one other option that folks that provided comments on this issue asked about, and it was a floating and reinforced sidewalk slab. What is that, do you know?
I'm not familiar with that kind of slab, we'd have to get back to you on that one.
I'm guessing it's sort of like a dock where it would sit up slightly above the ground underneath it?
Yeah, if it's any sort of thing like a bump, we, those would probably not be ADA compatible. So I don't know if it's like a, over, something over, but we'd have to get back to you.
Yeah, what I understood that to be is like a raised platform, like a bridge, where the sidewalk could be elevated off the ground.
Right.
That's what I understood in that email.
Yeah, it sounded something like that, and that's probably not ADA compliant, no.
No.
Okay, well, thank you for, you know, I just wanna make sure, I know there's some people have been concerned about this, and I, I felt pretty confident that we were, took a lot of that into consideration, and, and I do know we did update our, our, you know, our, our street trees after a lot of lessons that have been, you know, we have learned in our community over the years, so I know that has been, you know, updated and we're, we're following that, but, you know, the thing is, is best laid plans, right? I mean, you, you can have what you think is the right tree or the right, everything going right, and nature sometimes finds, finds a way. And so, we just hope that everyone can, you know, knows that we're, we're, we're not gonna cut down a big tree along our streetscape if we don't absolutely have to do that. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that in Lacey, where we are a tree city, this is something we really care about, and, and so I hope our community knows that. And thank you for all the work you're doing on this.
Appreciate that, thank you. One of the other projects that we wanted to mention about trees is Lakeview Meadows Utility Improvement. This is a project that's within the city of Lacey easement. A sewer main was identified in the area to be compromised due to tree root growth. And that very first photo, at the very center, kind of close to the bottom of that photo, you could see a sewer lid. That sewer lid is literally being hugged by the tree roots. And so with that kind of evidence of tree root growth, the issue could result in blocked sewer mains and problems within our own sewer system. So this project allows for both a sewer main and a parallel water main installation. This is the tree that has been taken down, that same exact tree. This is another tree that was in the vicinity, and that easement, you can see that the orange lines actually represent the limits of the easement, and that tree was taken down as well. So the easement for this project had removal of trees prior to placing the new sewer and the water mains, so this was part of the project that we need to do. And the stumps all came out, and now we're able to barely put in the water and sewer mains. Continuing on, we have a few lift stations that are gonna be coming up and also that are currently under construction. Just to tell you a little bit about the lift stations that we have here, the one off to the left is Lift Station Three Location. It's located off of Golf Club Road Northeast and is a wastewater pump station that was originally constructed in nineteen seventy. After fifty-five years of age, this facility is at the end of its service life. The new lift station's capacity takes into account future development demands within its service area. It includes a new wet well, new pumps, new valve and bypass vaults, and a new electrical control building with an onsite generator, fencing and other improvements. And then stormwater improvements are also being made on this project for the safety of the public from flooding that has occurred in the area. That photo off to the right shows you the location of existing Lift Station Eleven. It's located off of Glen Court Southeast, and it was constructed in nineteen eighty. The existing lift station is a vacuum-primed pump station that is being converted into a submersible pump station. Upgrades include a new electrical components, a new wet well with mechanical pumps, valve vault that meets current OSHA requirements, and other site improvements that will extend the life of this station. These next two photos show some of the everyday work that happens on projects like these. The photo off to the left shows compaction of base rock material over an installed storm drain, and the photo off to the right shows multiple valves that will be connected to a sewer system and the valve, the vault, and also the structures. And I want you to notice that all these things are underneath our feet, they're all buried. You will never see that vault again, other than this fixed picture and that wet well, and it will have a lid that will be sticking up top, but those are the kind of things that are happening every single day. We just install them, and then we don't even know they're down there. All right, the next project to just discuss briefly is the Jacob Smith House Roof Improvements. This project includes the removal of thirty-nine hundred square feet of cedar shake roof system and installation of the same type of roof system. And the project is in the early phase of construction, we call it the submittal phase, and it's anticipated to start mid-November and last about a month, depending on the weather. We're gonna go in, Ashley's gonna go over the projects, the police station.
All right, thanks, Deandra. Council's already intimately familiar with this project, so I'm just gonna touch on a few highlights of progress since the last time we gave an update. This photo was, it was taken very recently, as you can see. And what I wanna highlight here is that asphalt paving has been completed for the project, so major milestone as we're approaching this really terrible weather, all of the asphalt areas have been, now been paved. Couple other quick highlights for milestones that have been reached recently. The facility, both buildings now have permanent power, and so they're in the process of dismantling all the temporary power to those facilities and fully switching over to get systems operational. And furniture is, has been delivered and is in the process of installation at this point. So just a few photos to highlight here. This is a drone photo from sort of where the training building sits, further back on the site. What I wanted to highlight here is just the connectivity to the City Hall campus. You can see over on the left-hand side, next to the parking area, there will be sidewalk and a attachment point to the City Hall campus as it exists, bringing over into the police station plaza, so it'll be one campus feel and not two separate kind of facilities as you come in off of Third. This has all now been paved, as you saw in the previous picture. Highlighting here, the, the main photo on the left, you can see the covered ready line that I'm sure the police department will appreciate after the weather we've been having as well. And then, happening now up on the right is the, the floating paver system is being installed on that outdoor patio over the TPO roof. So if you've visited previously and just saw that TPO, this is what it'll look like as a more finished condition. Moving over to the interior here, you can see on the left-hand side, we have the Emergency Control Center that serves dual pump, dual purpose as a community room for the police station. That is a one-hundred-and-nine-person-capacity space for training events, public events as well. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see the main corridor as you come in on the upper level with the clear story windows up above. Couple things to highlight here, the exposed CLT panels are clear coat finished, and that is their finished condition, that color that you'll see the raw wood show through. And the vertical columns that you can see on that right-hand photo are actually steel beams, it is a steel-framed construction building. However, those are wrapped in Douglas fir that was harvested from the existing police station site and dried and repurposed for use in construction of the building. And then jumping to a little bit more of the, the interior here, on the left-hand photo, you can see an example of what sort of more of the office space will look like, with those carpeted areas and exposed ceilings throughout. And then on the right-hand side is the lower level, which is primarily open with polished concrete floors and then wainscoting throughout, so a little bit more utilitarian in the back of house spaces than you would see in the, the front lobby and the community room. And that is it for the police station unless there's questions.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, upcoming late 2025, early 2026 construction. Pretty much gone, tried to go through May 2026 for you, at least through March. So you can see from this list that we have a couple lift stations, we have a well, and electrical vehicle charging station is, or stations are going to be placed in the gated parking lot in the back of City Hall for fleet use, so that's just something else that's coming up. And I'm, again, I'm only gonna go over a few of these. We have Source Four asbestos abatement and house demo, so continue on with bringing in wells for the city of Lacey. And the last one would be that playground and the Lacey Veteran Services Hub. So we're just gonna go over a few of them. This was the project I was telling you about, we are waiting for it to dry. So we are trying to get this project complete. This project is being performed due to a city-owned eight-inch PVC water main break in the Thurston County right-of-way. The break triggered emergency repair efforts by city water staff, and although the water main was successfully repaired, the temporary pavement patch was installed until the full extent of the roadway damage could be assessed, excuse me. This project is anticipated, it was anticipated to begin this week, it has not begun yet. It is anticipated to take at least two weeks, and we're going to wait until it's dry enough to be able to remove the asphalt and then put it back in.
Is this Source Six Grace Production, was that the seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot well, is that what that is?
I think that's Marvin and Meridian, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't think it's that deep. I'll have to look it up. I'm not sure, I'll have to look that up for you.
Yeah, no worries. We, we've never drilled down that far, have we?
Yeah, we have wells that deep now.
We, we have, okay.
Yeah.
And, does that, does that, I mean, like, does that require a special pump to get that water out of there? Because that's way down there.
Yeah, yeah, they're a big hundred horsepower pump, so, yeah, it matters which aquifer we go into, there's multiple level aquifers. The shallows well we have is Source Four, and it's, it's got a, the water sits at twenty-five feet deep, three, you know, so it's super shallow.
So just again, to highlight another lift station, this existing lift station shown in the photo was originally constructed in nineteen seventy-nine. This project includes replacement of the electrical controls building, including installation of a new generator, a new odor control facility, and replace outdated appearances. The project has a two-hundred-and-twenty-day timeline, and we anticipate it will have long lead item suspension for specific materials, just like other projects, pumps, valves, and certain things that just take a long time to create. I don't anticipate this project actually being complete until at least 2027, if not even 2028. And then the last slide we have for you today is the Busch Park Playground Replacement that Ashley's gonna go over.
Thank you. Busch Park Playground, the five-to-twelve portion that you can see there on the left is the oldest playground in our inventory. It's roughly twenty years old at this point. Several, several of the parts have become obsolete and not available even for replacement, so this project has been in the queue for a, a little while. The city was fortunate to receive a, a grant from RCO to match up to fifty percent of the funding for this project, which is a total budget of four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, as well as a contribution from the, the Gateway Rotary towards the construction of this as well. So what you see on there, over there on the right is the selected concept design. Some of the finishes and colors may change slightly, they're still refining that final product, but this design was overwhelmingly selected from public voting participants. Parks Department did a great job of reaching out with the school district support, as well as hosting a couple of pop-up events at Busch Park to gather input from residents and park visitors, and ultimately, this was the selected concept out of four different options. We are poised to issue a contract for this structure by the end of November, and that will place construction beginning in January of next year with the completion by summer of next year. One other thing to mention, sorry, the, the woodchip surfacing that exists currently will all be removed and replaced with pour-and-place rubber surfacing for ADA accessibility, similar to what we have at the Depot Playground currently.
When kids fall down, they'll bounce.
Yes.
All kids fall down. Will there be swings?
There is, on the upper-left corner of that Plan View on the left, there's a multi-use disc swing that can fit in there. This footprint is pretty small, so the space available for swings would limit the remaining structures that we could place there.
Thank you.
That is all we have for you today.
Can you, I know, I can't go over every project, but the electrical, electric vehicle charging gated parking lot, what, what's that?
So in the back of City Hall and behind our gate, right there, we are going to put a fleet-use-only set of electrical vehicle charging stations, and it's my understanding that we did receive a grant from various, yes, from PSC to put in this, this set, and so we're waiting on PSC right now because of the big storm, they haven't gotten back to me yet, to see when the schedule is, so.
And the Veterans Hub, is that the elevator?
Yep.
Elevator, okay. Yeah, we've been waiting for that for a while.
And just on the, on the electrical, the charging stations, again, right now currently, that back parking lot's a secured parking lot for police vehicles and inspection vehicles for community development and public works. Once the police station's built and the police moves out, then we'll bring the rest of the city fleet back in there, and it's part of the long-term fleet conversion plan is to start getting more and more electric vehicles for the right type of vehicles. In order to do that, we need to start creating those charging stations where we park that fleet, so that's the purpose of that.
And then a free-up space in this lot?
Yeah, and then a free-up space over here, because now we can relocate those pool vehicles and other vehicles back into the area behind City Hall.
Great.
Yeah, one more comment on that. So, this is a PSC project for only fleet vehicles, city fleet vehicles, so the public can't use those chargers by the grant. They matched us two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per project, and when we did this, we put in for a project here at City Hall, and we also put in for a project over at Operations. And so the Operations Shop will get a line of chargers too, I believe it's sixteen over at the shop.
Oh, wow.
And we got approved over here for a dozen chargers, so. So it'll be a type three, one type-three charger each site, and then the rest will be type twos. It's a really good program.
My, my last question is about the Jacob Smith House. Obviously, I can see, you know, time for a new roof there, but the Jacob Smith House is one of the few built municipally-owned buildings that we have where solar could actually work on the building. It's, you know, on a hill facing exactly the right way for solar. And I also know that a lot of the credits and everything to install solar are just about ready to expire. Have we, have we ever pursued looking at putting solar on the Jacob Smith House? It's not like, you know.
I'm not, I, I don't recall on, look at, Jen, it doesn't look like we have looked at it in the past?
Not in the nine years I've been here. Hasn't been a discussion.
There's some really strict guidelines with the type of roofing we could put back on that because of historical registries. And we wanted to put in some, we talked about putting on different types of roofing that we needed to go back to the original.
Okay. Okay. Any else, any else have any questions? Thanks.
A follow-up on your solar.
Yeah.
I know it's not the most attractive thing, but there is land around the building.
Sure.
And I'm wondering, you know, if it might be possible to get a solar array of some sort that, that could generate something.
I think, I think that's a conversation that, you know, we don't have a ton of buildings, but we do have a few. It'd be really nice to, to look into what are our possibilities when it comes to solar, because it's such a long-term smart investment. The city of Lacey is not going anywhere. And so to invest in solar where we can invest in solar makes a lot of sense from the long-term prospects. And so, you know, just as part of our overall, you know, what we're trying to do when it comes to climate change, mitigation, everything else, I would, it'd be nice to sort of look at what are the possibilities out there so we can discuss it, you know. Are we, because I think we're still buying PSC green energy, right?
We are.
And so there was, there was a conversation at one point, we had, small conversation about, does it make sense to continue to buy that, you know, PSC green? And, you know, and I know we're invested in wind farms, so on, so forth, but instead take that money aside and invest that money every year in solar? And is that a better return on our investment long-term than just buying green energy?
Looking at different sources of energy and production is, is a long-term strategy. I know we've looked at several different potential sites in the past, let's say in the last five or six years, especially through some escrow projects and consultants, like, do some assessments. And at that time, the cost-benefit was not there. Of course, as time goes on, technology improves, opportunities improve. I think my recommendation is, yeah, it's always good to talk about, but how do we incorporate that in future, either facility, substantial facility improvement or maintenance or new projects is where to look at instead of an independent, separate project? Because then we don't have, you know, we have to look for grant funding and those type of things. But if you build into a, a future building project as one of the considerations, we can look at that and look at the cost related.
Anyone else have anything? Thank you. So now we're going to go to the code amendment development guidelines. Probably should have moved this around instead of having to make you wait all night, but oh, well. Here we are.
Okay, now both our mics are on. All right, well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here we are tonight to present Planning Commission's recommendation on code amendments that would codify the development guidelines into the Lacey Municipal Code. So if you think back to 2024, end of 2024, Sarah Schelling did an amazing job bringing before you amendments to our Public Works Development Standards, Chapter One, to bring the city into compliance with Senate Bill 5290, which was a permit streamlining regulations that came out of the state. We had an obligation to update that, Chapter One, by the end of the year to meet those state mandates, and also to protect ourselves from having to refund permit fees if we didn't meet those standards. So this is really kind of Phase Two of that effort, which was, let's take the sprint-to-the-finish-line effort that Sarah took forwards and really refine it, streamline this, and bring it into Lacey Municipal Code to create one consolidated permit review section within our code. So to that, I will hand it over to Shannon Vincent and Sarah to add anything they'd like to add to that and take it away.
Perfect. Well, hi, everybody. My name is Shannon Vincent. I'm a senior project planner with the city of Lacey. This is my first time meeting a lot of you. We're really excited to be here. This has been about six months of work now and probably our first time actually briefing you all on it. So excited to hear your feedback. Just an overview and to jump off what Vanessa said, right now, our processes and procedures live in two different places. Number one is Chapter One of the Development Guidelines and Public Works Standards Manual, and then also in a few places in Title 16, which is our zoning title. So overall, our intention with this update is to consolidate all of those procedures under one codified title, restructure that code to improve its navigation and accessibility, and then also make some revisions to the text to clarify or improve our current processes. The draft that's before you today is very long. It's almost 100 pages. We kept it so you could see the red line of what we're taking out, what we're moving around. Anything highlighted in gray is just an item that's being relocated, may not necessarily be new or taken out, but just moved to a different place for clarity. And overall, the intention of this update really is to improve predictability and clarity for applicants who are using our processes, who are submitting development permits with the city, and for staff who uses this code every day, for hearing examiners to make their decisions, and you all. One thing I would like to note is, we held a public hearing on October 8th with the Planning Commission, and they recommended that council approve the procedures as written. Since then, we've received a few public comments related to our proposed work, and we have a few recommended amendments as a part of the work session today that we just want to go over for clarity. So in terms of the actual content of the title, we are relocating several chapters, like I said. Number one is going to be Chapter One of the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards Manual. That is proposed to be broken up into five separate chapters based on how it's already structured. We are also proposing to relocate six chapters from Lacey Municipal Code Title 16. These all relate to project permit applications, so things like conditional use permits, development agreements, site plan review, just so that our application requirements are all codified in one simple area for people to use and see. We are also proposing two new chapters. One is related to interpretations and amendments, and another is related to temporary use permits. And the title before you, or the draft title before you today, too, only shows what we are proposing as Title 11. In whatever the final ordinance is, there will also be a lot of corrections to the rest of the titles in our code that reference what the outdated chapters are. So with that, for the rest of the work session today, we are hoping to go over what the actual proposed changes are to our processes and procedures, so you guys are all in the know. And if you want to follow along on the draft, too, I included some page numbers just because it can get lengthy. If you have any questions, feel free to jump in at any time. First is going to be some updates to our definitions. We are going to be taking the definitions from Chapter One of the Public Work Standards Manual and incorporating them into Lacey Municipal Code. We are also going to be taking definitions that occur in Title 16 and adopting them by reference. So if you look at any of the gray highlighted items on Page Two, it'll say, see this definition in another title. This is so that in the event that we have to update definitions in the future, we only have to update them in one place, and they don't live in two different places in the code. We are also proposing to add definitions where needed. For example, in our temporary use chapter, we're going to be using new terminology like temporary use and storage trailer that will need definitions for applicants and staff, and then revising some existing definitions like conditional use, where there are processes included in the definition, where it'd be more appropriate for them to be in the chapter. Next is going to be our codes for application material. Right now, it is very brief. What we are proposing is actually providing an exhaustive list of required application material that staff can then use to inform our permit applications and our pre-submission conferences. So I want to stress that this is not us requiring more information out of applications. Instead, it's actually just created a codified list that we can lean on when we are creating new application types or taking, taking applicants through a pre-sub. Are there any questions on that before we move on? Next is changes to our pre-submission conferences. This is really minor, but something that staff noticed that, that may be needed, is requiring a new pre-submission conference be held if more than one year has passed since a project was proposed. This can be waived on a case-by-case basis, and I expect that it would be. This is really only necessary if really pertinent regulations have changed within that year, or if the proposal itself has substantially changed and there are new regulations that it needs to be held to. And then next.
Question on that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question too.
I am not a developer. So it's important for me to think about, like, the timeline of how a proposal becomes a thing. So a pre-submission conference would happen far in advance of a project getting vested, which is when the permit is reviewed and meets requirements and is approved, right? So this allows us to say, well, you know, you came and talked to us a year ago, but the laws related to development in this area have changed, so we need to have another preliminary conversation for your project. Is that kind of what this is?
Exactly, yeah. And our pre-subs are scheduled pretty shortly after they're requested to, and they're also free. So ideally, this isn't causing any additional barriers for people who are submitting applications. Instead, it's actually supposed to improve predictability for when they do submit a formal application and they vest to regulations. They understand what the regulations they're being held to are.
Yeah. Because things can change year over year.
Exactly.
Things seem like that they do change every single year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense, okay.
Yep.
So on extending the duration of approval for most land use applications from 18 to 24 months, right, and still being able to request a six-month extension, can you just kind of explain how that's a benefit to the developers in the community?
Yeah, definitely. I think you're a few slides ahead of me, but yeah, I can speak to that now. Right?
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. I'll go over it then, but, but.
Yeah, we can wait until we get there. Yeah, just continue on. I'm sorry about that.
Good.
I've got a bad habit of that.
So next with our vesting protocols, we wanted to make clear in our code what items do vest and what do not. So vesting occurs, like you said, with the submittal of a complete application. So essentially, when a complete application is submitted, let's say October 28th, they are held to the standards in place on October 28th, even if they change in six months. What we wanted to do when we were writing our vesting language was make really clear what we're asking for. And we have since received a few public comments related to that that I wanted to go over now. First was a public comment that had concerns that the new language wasn't in keeping with our current procedures, which was our intention, was not to change any of our vesting standards, just make clear what we're asking for. Because of that, we are recommending that project permit application be included to the list of complete applications. Project permit application is pretty much defined as any land use application that is submitted with the cities. These are going to be things like conditional use permits, site plan review. These already vest under our current procedures, and this would just clarify that those will continue to vest once this code is adopted. Second was a comment from internal staff, just clarifying that stormwater regulations adopted under state and federal law are also not subject to vesting. This is also in keeping with our current Public Work Standards Manual, and is just intended to make sure that all of the things that we use are consistent with one another.
The vesting does not apply when you have a list there? Is that, is there anything new on that list?
Not that we don't already. Essentially, no. Everything that's written on the list, we already don't vest. So things like impact fees, pre-subs, yeah.
Yeah.
But it isn't explicitly.
If you pay your taxes or.
Exactly, yeah. It isn't explicitly written in our code now.
And is, is there a window that vesting exists in? I mean, does it go, it doesn't go for perpetuity, does it?
No, it will, vesting will last as long as a project is active, essentially. So once you submit a complete application, until that application is approved and the project is built, your application is essentially vested. There are different periods that it happens throughout the lifetime of a project. So for example, from a land use permit is submitted, like site plan review, and then they submit their building permits, they're then held to the building code for the date that that permit is submitted. And this code is intended to clarify when exactly those dates occur.
But is there a clock that starts or was?
There, yeah, clocks start, so specifically the clocks that Vanessa was saying related to Senate Bill 5290 will start of the date that that complete application is filed. So that is day one. And the day that we deem it complete, and then timelines for review will start.
There's also added into the vesting section language related to when we place projects on hold for additional information and a timeline. And I think Shannon's going to cover this coming up pretty soon, but a timeline associated with when additional information needs to be submitted by, otherwise that project would expire. It would lose.
That's why.
Yeah, and she'll talk about that, I think, in the next few slides.
Yeah, that's actually my next item is time. It's very submitted, perfect timing.
Jumped in the shark.
No pun intended. Yeah, time limits for resubmital. So right now, hypothetically, staff could request additional information for a project. The app, the information is never submitted. The applicants decide they no longer want to move forward, and that project will live on forever and essentially would be vested to the codes that were in place when it was filed, even if that was years and years ago. So a part of our update is going to be proposing time limits for resubmital of the requested information. We are proposing 180 days, which is about six months. Applicants at any time during that six-month timeframe can request an extension of time. We are not requiring any limits on what that extension of time is. It would be negotiated between the applicant and staff for what's appropriate for the project or why they need additional time. And so long as that's all in writing, the application then could, they could take longer than those 180 days to provide the information. But that's just to reduce the amount of those projects that are inactive and, and live on forever. Next would be modernizing our noticing requirements. There isn't a specific page that points to this. I use 23 as an example, if you wanted to look. But updating our processes so our noticing requirements are modernized. We would propose that notice of application be posted on the city website rather than posted in the newspaper, and that notices of decisions can be provided via email instead of via letter. I think that this is in keeping with what a lot of applicants want and what is easiest and best for staff. Hopefully, we can get the word out that that is where people can find notices of application. But within state statutes, this would be allowed. Things like notices, hearing notices, will still need to be provided in the newspaper. So there are some things that don't have wiggle room, but these are a few items where we thought we could use, you know, media and the internet to make our processes a little bit easier.
Would we be considering like a hard stop on notice of, notice of application that would be published in the newspaper?
Not necessarily. Provision that's added to most of those requirements, especially, well, especially for things that are provided via email, we still leave open the option that people can request to receive them hard copy. So for example, neighbors that maybe don't have email are welcome to request that everything, notices of decision be provided via letter. I would assume that if staff felt it was necessary to provide it in the paper, they could still do so, but we wouldn't be required to anymore.
And just by a matter of practice, if we received a letter or comment letter from a member of the public and all they provided us was, let's say, a seal, a P.O. box or a mailing address, we would automatically just use that as our form of communication, because that's the only type of communication we have. So we'll default to what we have, but this at least legally allows us to use email for that notification.
Next is duration of approval, which is what you had brought up earlier. We are proposing to extend the duration of approval for most land use applications from 18 months to 24 months. While we were drafting these revisions and going over it with the current planning staff, they identified that a lot of applicants already use the six-month extension that they're allowed during their original approval period. So most folks who are in the process of construction request an additional six months. So we figured as a part of this update, why not accommodate that, make it 24, and then still provide them the opportunity to extend an additional six months if needed. So just giving people more time in line with what we see just the general trend is for construction timelines. I think finally, in changes to the development guidelines and Public Work Standards Manual, is reconsideration of an administrative decision. Right now, we only have provisions for reconsideration of a hearing examiner decision, but this would add a process so parties of record can request reconsiderations of decisions issued by staff. Staff can maintain, alter, or reverse the decisions as needed. There's a timeline spelled out within the text itself of when that happens, but once a reconsideration is issued, parties would then have a second opportunity to file an appeal of whatever. of whatever the reconsideration is.
Can you define parties of record for us?
Yeah. Not off the top of my head. Parties of record are going to be folks who receive a notice of application, folks who provide testimony at a hearing, the applicants themselves.
That's good.
Perfect. Yeah, it was anybody who's notified about the project or has been involved in the project, essentially.
Okay.
Question on that.
Yeah.
Does that, you know, basically allowing folks that have submitted projects a second bite at the apple with us? If we make a decision saying we're not sure that this meets the standards, they have another opportunity to follow up with us and get us to reconsider, kind of work with us to figure out a way to meet standards. Does that impact the timeline for fees under fifty-two eighty? Like, is that going to count against us if we give that additional flexibility?
Question.
No, it would not. Those timelines essentially end once an original decision is issued. Any appeal that happens afterward or reconsideration that happens afterward isn't subject to any of those timelines. Next, I'm going to be moving into the revisions for the Title sixteen chapters. If you're looking through your draft, you'll see a lot of redline through these items. And I just wanted to go over some overarching themes that we're changing in all of them. One is removing intent sections. I think that internally, we found that often if there is a gray area or a need for an interpretation of a development regulation in the code, it can sometimes be at odds with the intent section of a chapter. So, just to keep with what the actual regulation itself is, we're proposing removing intent sections. This is a good way to phase them out, since we're already revising a lot of these chapters. Next is just updating wording and capitalization to be consistent with our current style guide. And then a lot of relocation and re-titling of sections when necessary, just so the title itself is consistent. So, if you see any gray, that is just a relocated item. With that, I'm going to jump into site plan review. The first area that we are proposing to change with site plan review is the applicability section. One is to clarify our existing requirements specifically related to intensification. Staff and applicants have both found that the requirement that if you are intensifying a land use, or, I can't remember the exact wording off the top of my head, but there's no actual definition of what intensification is. So, where do we set that metric? What we're proposing is intensification is greater than ten percent increase in a measurable standard of the development. So, ten percent increase in the building size, ten percent increase in the parking stalls, things like that. Second would be adding another applicability provision related to Senate Bill fifty-two ninety requirements. Fifty-two ninety mostly had to do with timelines, but there was a small section that said interior remodels cannot be subject to site plan review if they don't result in additional bedrooms or other items. And that originally had kind of gone under the radar with our update. So, we are adding that in just to make sure that we are consistent with current legislation. Next would be establishing review criteria that address site design and compliance with development regulations. Right now, staff already review for these items, essentially. They just aren't within our current code. So, in a decision letter, we would then have, are you meeting A, B, C? C being, you know, is the project consistent with, you know, building height and setbacks that are required by the zoning? Is it consistent with a comprehensive plan? Have they mitigated any impacts to surrounding uses, things like that? Sorry, Jim?
I'll let you finish, then I'll ask my question.
And then lastly, would be adding a threshold for what is considered a major and minor site plan amendment. Amendments would happen after a site plan has already been approved and the applicant proposes changing something. Just to be consistent throughout the chapter, we're also considering that to be the ten percent change in a measurable standard. So, for example, gets approved, they want to increase the building size by twenty-five percent. That would need to go back through another site plan review process. If the building was only proposed to be changed by five percent, then we wouldn't need to go back through those hoops.
How'd you come up with the ten percent? Is that just, I mean, seems a little bit of an arbitrary number, is that-
It is just a number that seemed reasonable, in all honesty. That number can change. It is a fairly common number to see in other jurisdictional regulations, that a ten percent change is kind of that threshold. And also, the International Building Code identifies a ten percent change in terms of a permit that would say it's significant enough change that you would have to resubmit from a vesting perspective. So, there's that tangible connection, but it's not the same section of code.
Is there any wiggle room in there for, you know, a project ends up changing, you know, something moves around where it ends up being just slightly over ten percent, but it's not really changing too much of the project? Is there any wiggle room to not have to go back and to do that? Or are we saying ten percent and that's-
Right now, how it's drafted is just ten percent. There could be flexibility to add a provision-
I feel like there's always like, there's always an exception to the, like, ten percent, I think is probably close, but I wouldn't want to, you know, I would like to allow someone to be able to make the argument where it's like, yeah, this is slightly more than ten percent, but it's not really changing the project within too much to be able to not have to go back and redo everything. And so, but that seems to me like that needs to be between, you know, it needs to be reasonable enough for the staff to say, yeah, I agree with you, right? But I don't want staff to be in a situation, oh, nope, you hit that ten percent mark, and tough, you know.
I was going to ask, in that section, I'm looking at page forty-two, does, do all three of those criteria, A, B, and C, have to be true before a site plan review would be required? Or is it any of those?
All three would need to be met before it could be approved.
Okay, so we've got these three criteria, and if the update to the project meets all three of those criteria, you have to go back for another site plan review. And up until these proposed changes, we have no standard for what intensification means. That feels actually riskier than picking ten percent as a reasonable number, because then it's like, at our discretion, we think this one's intensifying, but this one's not. I would prefer that we have a standard that we can point to. So, I think, I think that's good. I don't know if ten percent is the right number, if that's what's in other jurisdictions' language, but I think we should have a standard for what that is.
Right, and right now, historically, what we've done is we've looked at intensification as anything that changes the approved building footprint.
That's where I was getting at.
And anything that increases like number of trips in the P.M. peak hours, so that you would have to readjust your transportation impact analysis. And so, that would be an intensification. We've looked at modifications of the site plan where it's not changing really the amount of pavement that you're going to have or the amount of building coverage, but maybe relocating some things as minor alterations. But it currently, anything that changes the footprint, any size-
So, this standard actually probably will result in fewer site plan reviews being needed.
Right, fewer major alterations.
Because there is some, below ten percent, you might just be able to do it administratively, okay.
But you see where I'm saying with the ten percent? Like, ten percent's probably right, but, you know, and I agree, we should have some sort of standard in there. But I still like, it still seems like it'd be nice to be able to allow staff to say, yeah, okay, I see where you're at, the ten percent, it's not really changing, you know.
I mean, if the council wishes we could add a provision and there's, that kind of is that catch-all that says unless otherwise approved by the director or the administrator, the decision-maker type of language into here, which would kind of be that catch-all and provide that flexibility within the code section, we can add that in if that's the council's wish.
I would think so. Is that, so that was going to be my question, was like, is the ten percent to, because of footprint size? And then in addition to that, is that also considering impervious surface?
I would think so.
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, yes, yep. I think once you get much more past that, you have to start looking at impacts to stormwater systems.
Yeah, sure.
Their, how their infiltration, yes, exactly, exactly.
For sure.
I think your layered approval, if it were to slightly exceed ten percent, so the decision didn't just rest with one person, but required two or three levels of approval,
Yeah.
I think is a good suggestion.
Maybe if they submit material showing it's not with that additional, they submit material is showing it's not going to have an impact to stormwater systems or to the transportation infrastructure or something like that.
But it takes the pressure off that frontline staffer to know that, you know.
Yeah, we can brainstorm, we'll get something in there.
I just think some reasonableness needs to go into that, you know, and which is, I think, what we're somewhat known for here in Lacey. And so, I just want to make sure that reasonableness still exists.
Perfect. Okay, next is variances. This is a chapter where you'll see a lot of changes, but it's not anything too crazy. One is changing the thresholds for reviewing authority, so variances with minor impacts can be reviewed administratively. Right now, almost all variances are quasi-judicial applications, meaning they're reviewed and approved by the hearing examiner. We are proposing that variances that change a measurable standard by up to twenty-five percent can be reviewed by staff. So, a good example is if you have a twelve-foot setback, you want to reduce it to nine feet, staff can review and approve that decision. If you wanted to reduce it to six, that would go to the hearing examiner. This is just to reduce the amount of quasi-judicial applications that require a lot of time and money by both the applicant and staff for things that are relatively minor. Next is going to be defining which provisions are eligible for variances. This excludes regulations relating to our procedures, so things in Title eleven, things in the variance chapter themselves, or the permitted uses within a zoning district. This is pretty much in keeping with what we already do, but again, it just wasn't something that was spelled out in our code. And then finally, for the review criteria for variances, we're just proposing rewording them for clarity. Some of the criteria actually had two items within them, so we're just suggesting breaking them up and reordering them so that staff and applicants know what they're being reviewed against.
And in the, in the staff report, maybe it's Jermaine to this section you're talking about, you said that we're updating some of the residential development design standards to explicitly require design superiority? So, was it unclear before, or am I skipping ahead?
That is for our planned residential development section.
Okay, I'll hold my question.
Okay. Next is conditional use permits. We don't have a lot of proposed changes to this chapter, just again, establishing review criteria that we're missing from our current code. The review criteria for conditional use permits are pretty straightforward. It ensures consistency with comprehensive plan, compatibility with adjacent uses. If the proposed use is going to have a lot of negative impacts on any nearby properties, whether they've adequately mitigated for those, so things like noise and lighting, and that they're just providing good landscaping and infrastructure for the project.
But we're not removing any proposed uses?
No. Next is the planned residential development section, which is what you had brought up. PRDs are a type of plat that are allowed to deviate from our regular development standards. So, folks using a PRD can propose different setbacks than a normal plat would. But in turn, there has to be some type of superior design that would kind of offset any, you know, negative impacts that result from those variations. What we are proposing is establishing criteria to ensure that that superiority of design actually happens. And that it would be, the resulting plat would be superior to that of a normal plat, and that there's actually a public benefit that occurs as a result. So, some examples we listed in the code are things like protection of natural environments or critical areas that otherwise wouldn't be required to be protected, providing a substantial amount of affordable housing, things like that.
So, if you want to change the twenty-foot setback at the rear to fifteen, then you need to demonstrate that your design is better than what we would normally have?
Yeah, and we-
Does that sound right?
PRDs can offer a lot of flexibility, and that, I think, is the purpose of making sure that there's a public benefit associated with approving a PRD. You can get additional zoning above and beyond maximum zoning in-
Density.
Or density in districts, yep. So, you can get additional density, modified setbacks.
amended road standards.
Amended road standards, so a lot of flexibility in terms of the design of the subdivision. And the one criteria we've had in the past is a twenty percent open space requirement. And that's been the criteria for review up to this point.
And it seems like, and we have, there's several of, you know, when we were expanding, you know, a lot in the, you know, mid-two thousands, we saw this a lot. And you're right, it seemed like the one thing we got out of that was additional park space, open space. But are we saying now that, yes, you're going to have to prove that there's a park space, but that's not going to be necessarily good enough? You're going to also have to show other benefits to make it superior than just saying, yeah, we're going to give you a lot more density, but you're going to have to give us some parks?
Show some superior design in your housing design. And yet, yes, additional park space, superior housing designs, we're creating better communities. And then, other public benefits associated with that higher intensity design. Oftentimes, what we see is PRDs are going into, especially now, Jubilee and Edgewater, that's probably the biggest PRD we have. But now our PRDs are going into, onto smaller parcels in the middle of highly developed areas. So, what's the benefit for the surrounding community in order to obtain that additional density?
Can you give an example?
Yeah, I think, honestly, since I've started here, I've not seen a single subdivision that is not a PRD.
Of course.
Because our land is constrained, right? And so, what we've seen happen is that the only standard that exists today is the thirty percent open space requirement, which is analogous to typically what has to be set aside pursuant to our critical areas regulations. So, ultimately, by meeting our already existing critical areas regulations, they get to amend ninety-nine percent of our development standards as a part of their subdivision process, and are not required to provide anything of benefit back to the community and/or in terms of design to those that will live there in the future. So, the goal with this is to say, hey, let's still maintain that open space standard. That's clear that that's in the code. But let's also ask that if you're going to do a PRD, we want to see a project that will be at least equal to, if not better than, what we would see under the standard application of our code. So, and then that would be up to, you know, subjective area review.
Could like, the introduction of lower-income housing or smaller housing automatically do that?
So, the draft, the draft regulations have kind of a laundry list of items that could be, it could be broader than that, if somebody brought a creative idea.
Sixty-three, okay.
And the list that's provided in the draft code two is a list of examples of things that they could use. We will also leave it open to a developer to propose some other type of superior design, and that's something that they can then kind of negotiate with staff of whether it meets that requirement.
So, increased density would be superior?
No.
No.
That's a bonus.
That's a bonus, yeah.
Okay, so that's a bonus, but if they were building under AMI?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yeah.
Whatever, okay.
As a part of that, could they, I've always wondered this, like, you're developing a community, and everyone would love to see a little, small little retail within that community, like a little coffee shop, wherever that. Does our code allow that to be a public benefit and then allow it, but the code doesn't necessarily allow retail in, you know what I'm saying?
The PRD chapter allows, like, neighborhood commercial-type uses to be incorporated in a PRD as part, currently, as part of the chapter.
And the list has grocery store, drugstore, barber and beauty shop, laundromat.
Yep. Yes, that's in our current code. We just haven't seen, we just haven't seen anybody taking advantage of that type of use within the PRDs. Panorama City, I guess, is an example of a PRD, and they do have facilities for panorama residents that serve those purposes.
Good, thank you. I really think that stressing the smaller home that's more affordable, right? I mean, that is, that needs to be right in the forefront when we have such a demand for affordable housing. I'd love to see smaller homes, definitely, that are in there that are included for purchase. Single-story, you know. Okay.
So, next is development agreements. As a part of our updates to the development agreements chapter, we just wanted to ensure it was clear what staff is asking for and what is required as a part of a development agreement, because these are applications that span typically a long period of time, have significant impacts. And we just wanted to ensure that our code was clear and in line with the state statutes for development agreements. So, a part of that is defining the- agreements. So, a part of that is defining the content that's required in the agreement, itemizing what incentives may be allowed, and then establishing actual review criteria for approval or denial of the application. The review criteria themselves mostly relate to whether it's furthering the policies of the comprehensive plan, whether there is an economic benefit to the city of Lacey as a result of the development agreement, things like that. This was another chapter that we received public comments on after the public hearing. There were concerns that, and you heard earlier tonight, there were concerns that as a part of our changes to the development agreement sections, we will be restricting the modifications to code that would be allowed. We believe that the code as drafted is in keeping with what we already do. As a part of state statutes, development agreements aren't allowed to waive densities or types of uses permitted within a district. We are making that codified language within our code that wasn't already there before. That being said, I don't believe that we think that there are any material changes to the way that we, or the standards, review standards that we hold development agreements to.
And I'll add one more thing that kind of came to mind this evening that you didn't necessarily see in my response, and that is, there's nothing in these code amendments that would prohibit an applicant from coming and applying for a rezone for a property, which would be the actual appropriate path to be able to change basically your zoning and your density on the site. So, that provision is in our code and is still available, and if and when we get to the finish line on the comprehensive plan, there will be some more flexibility built into those opportunities as well if that's adopted by council. So, nothing in these provisions will prohibit that, and you could also consolidate that process in combination with a development agreement, because the ultimate decision maker on a rezone would be the council as well as on a development agreement.
Isn't the process to request a rezone in the new Chapter 11 just up toward the top? I feel like I saw some language in there about how you come in to ask for a rezone.
Yeah, and it's actually the next slide after, no.
We're getting pretty good at this.
Because, because I think, yes, we are proposing a few changes to how rezones are processed. Do we want to get into it, or do we want to, are there any more questions about this section?
Let's get into it.
Perfect.
That's great, by the way. That's some good work on the, we've given a lot, a latitude in Lacey with, you know, and said, give us a free, you know, a free park here, and you can do all this stuff. It's nice to see a little, little bit more than that going forward.
So, right now, rezones essentially all follow a legislative review process, which is that they are reviewed by planning commission before they move on to city council for final approval. What we are proposing is that different types of rezones have different review processes before they come to council. So, for example, if a rezone is proposed in conjunction with a project permit application, that would go to the hearing examiner. That rezone would go to the hearing examiner for recommendation to council instead of to planning commission. Any rezones that require a comprehensive plan amendment would still go to planning commission and then city council, as well as rezones not requiring a comprehensive plan amendment but not submitted in conjunction with a land use application.
Just to add one clarity on the first bullet, the first bullet, also, that rezone would have to be consistent with the established land use map that, as you all know, is following this process through our comprehensive plan. So, that can only go through that process if that rezone falls underneath that already adopted comprehensive land use designation. Otherwise, it would drop to the process that requires the comp plan designation and rezone together.
Yep. And that also is a part of those decision criteria that we're drafting for rezones. For a project rezone, a decision criteria will be whether it's consistent with the future land use map.
I mean, that's always a pretty daunting thing, right? And I, and I understand in some ways of why it should be, because obviously, your project can have a major effect on, you know, traffic patterns and a bunch of other things, but it seems like it's always been quite a daunting process, you know? And sometimes we've seen people, you know, developers who say, you know, I'd like to put this here, and it's not, you know, not allowed within the zone, but it doesn't really, you know, it's not going to significantly change traffic patterns or anything, and it's a very long daunting process to do that. And sometimes you don't, they don't have that time, right, where things can move real quickly with, all of a sudden, someone's looking to do a project, and you're, you need a certain amount of property to do that, and it's kind of like, can I, is it, can we go forward in a reasonable amount of time, or do you have to go through this long process of rezoning and everything else, which is like, a lot of people would say, I'm not going to even handle, you know, do that, and we can miss out on a potentially good project.
Yeah, and a part of, of the reason that we wanted these updates to happen too is so folks also have the opportunity to apply for a rezone and then see if it would be successful before putting in a lot of time and money into their actual design for their project and submitting their applications. Yeah. Next are two new chapters before we wrap up. First is interpretations and amendments. In the draft, you now have to go back. Sorry if you're following along. But this is to actually establish a path for applicants to request code interpretations. Right now, we don't have a path for this in our code, and this would help consistency between staff who's actually using the, using the regulations to review projects against, and making sure that there's clarity for applicants who are submitting, and there may be a gray area in the code. So, those code interpretations would be issued by the CED director. They would then be posted to the city website so that it was available for public viewing. Issued interpretations would be added to an amendment docket kept by CED that would then annually come in for amendment and then to be actually codified so that we could consider the gray area finalized and provide clarity where there may not already be in our code. Amendments will also, or interpretations will have review criteria to ensure they are consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the amendment itself has merit. So, if there's actual confusion in the code that can be interpreted different ways, that's when interpretation would go through to an amendment.
So, would there be a timeline associated with an interpretation, or how does that work? Like, if somebody requests one?
Yeah, they would be processed under a limited administrative review timeline, which is up to 65 days. Typically, I think for our limited administrative review projects, we don't usually exhaust the full timeline, but it would depend on if there was additional information required, or the amount of research that would need to be done by staff before actually issuing the interpretation. So, up to 65 days at most. And then finally, is a new chapter for temporary use permits. Right now, we don't have a process for temporary use permits. We do have a chapter for street merchant activities, which usually has to do with temporary retail sales. So, we are proposing creating a new review process for temporary activities that don't already have that path for approval. So, these would be things like model homes or construction trailers that are anticipated to be in place for less than one year. Applications would be reviewed under the limited administrative review, which is the 65 days that I was just discussing, or a full administrative review, depending on whether it has a significant impact on surrounding properties, and there are some criteria for what constitutes that significant impact. Temporary use permits would be valid for one year, but that one-year approval could be extended for up to five years, provided they re-request during each yearly approval period. And I believe that is all that I have. Our proposed schedule would be adding the final ordinance to a future regularly scheduled meeting, as drafted for the planning commission with the proposed amendments to the vesting section that we went over today, and then with all the feedback that we've taken from you guys today as well incorporated.
Can we address the one question that we had in public comment? What, yeah, can you address that, that question, and is there anything in this new outline, you know, or this draft that is less, where, you know, I, it feels like we were meeting the intent of what the applicant was saying, but I'm, can you just clarify that?
Yeah, and we can probably go back to the slide. The first was adding a provision to the vesting regulations that we are asking council to add that it would be in addition to what's actually recommended from the planning commission. So, it would be a change from that recommendation, but it would be in addition to that code section as shown on the slide. I don't remember what slide it was, Shannon, that you had. And then, the second was the development agreement comments, and we talked about the development agreement language, and Shannon talked about how our goal there is to represent and reflect state law as it applies. But in addition to that, there is still provisions in our code for the applicant to ask for a rezone. It's just a separate application process that requires a separate fee. We could always consolidate those processes into one timeline. The ultimate decision maker on a development agreement is the city council. The ultimate decision maker on a rezone is the city council, so it would all go through the same decision-making body at the end of the day. So, while the code specifically says you can't ask for that rezone, that path is still available, it's just a different path.
Well, and it seemed like what was in our code previously might have given a mistaken impression that we had additional flexibility that is actually curtailed by state law.
Correct.
So, we're adding a reference to the state law that kind of creates those boundaries.
Yep. But we still have a pathway, it's just a different one, and that's what I also wanted to make clear to the council. It's not that those options aren't available to this particular commenter, as well as anybody else that came in to use that pathway.
And that's very true. We, we map it right out on the decision criteria, and it says, right, you know, it's really city council at the end of the day that has the ultimate authority here. And then, you know, in the city's best interest, we have some pretty broad, you know, things here for, for the decision criteria that I think meets that, meets that intent. So, I mean, I'm looking at this, and I feel like, man, this, this feels pretty, you know, this feels better than what we had before, for sure. And so, it really lays out where, you know, where there could be issues and what the, where the path forward is on that. So, I'm not sure, does that, does the commenter understand where we're at and feel better about that?
I do understand where you're at, the position that the city is taking, and I do applaud Vanessa's effort to hear us and work with us as well as with regard to the first two items, you know, I-
Can you please come up to the, I'm sorry. We normally don't do this, but, you know, I'll-
Specifically, as it relates to the first two items, I think Vanessa's done a great job of addressing that, and I think her recommended edit, we're supportive of that, both for the Hoxbury Business District business commercial zoning with the insertion that she is suggesting, in addition to including the language that we're proposing as well for the vesting. As it relates to the development agreement, if, say, for example, we have a site that is split zoned, where it might make sense from a logical standpoint to have buildings that serve a retail area. However, we're encumbered by zoning by rectangular boxes that would put that retail in the middle of the site, wouldn't it be great if we could propose something that says, hey, you know, you guys have this, we have a concept where we can apply this to where this makes logical sense to put retail out towards the street, say, as opposed to in the center of a site. We happen, just by coincidence, happen to have a split zoned site. But to me, that makes logical sense, and we understand that the appetite for the city might not be there to amend the zoning as it exists today, for whatever reason. And I think you guys also were probably inundated with the amount of zoning requests that you got. I think there were like 50, 50 applications. So, that, that's a substantial amount of ask. What we're asking for, and, you know, this is entirely up to the council, is why would we lose that flexibility with the development agreement? And maybe that doesn't exist, but our understanding based upon, you know, what we're reading, and this is a 750-page document, I actually haven't read the whole thing, it puts me to sleep at night, but why would we narrow down that if, if, if we have an opportunity to do something great? You know, part of the history of the Betty property is, you know, working with Stam Hill and the city, specifically with the improvement of 31st Street, the expansion of Marvin Road there. That didn't need to happen, but that was a collaborative effort with the city and, and the Hill Betty Estate to do that. And I think both sides benefited from that, and we have some ideas about this site specifically that may not necessarily comply with code, but I think they're good ideas. And, you know, this really is the last infill site in that section for, for a large-scale development for a master plan. So, as it relates to that, you know, we're not, we don't have institutional money. As I said, we're a family. This project is going to be built in phases, so we'll have to go out to a bank and get a loan for phase one, phase two, phase three, so forth. So, this is not something that, this is going to be, you know, Target with a Costco and smaller retail that's going to go here. We're going to have to methodically think about how this is done, and our site is split zoned. And I, and I don't know, you know, it might make sense that a grocery store comes along, it might make perfect sense for it, but does that comply with the existing zoning? You know, can we have some flexibility where, where we might consider the public benefit of that and the desires of the city that might necessarily be compliant with this, with the zoning, but are we handcuffed to that?
Well, thank you for that. I really appreciate your comments, and, you know, and looking at this, you know, these updates here on the development agreements, I really do feel like there's quite a bit of flexibility, and, and it talks about the benefit of the community and, you know, all, all these things that you, you're, you're suggesting. And so, what I would say is, as in any, anything, I think we really, in Lacey, we try to accommodate and look at the public good and, and try to figure out a way to get to yes. We've always, we've always done that, and I don't see anything in here that is, is changing that. And so, but there's always things that come up that we, you know, you couldn't plan for. And so, I think, you know, having the flexibility to be able to change zones or, you know, do things and have an easier process is what I care about, and it looks like we are addressing that. And so, I think we, I think there is a path forward for, for not only your project but other projects that are in that same circumstance where, you know, you maybe have a split zone and you can have to do things in phases, and I think we'll, you know, Lacey does a good job of trying to work with those applicants to make those projects come to fruition. So, I think, I feel pretty good about this, giving you the flexibility to do that. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, this is going to come, you guys are going to go back and take everything into consideration, what you've heard here today, and this will be before us a future meeting, and-
Did you need direction from us?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask if the council was open to it going to an ordinance, and I think we had it slated for no, no, what's the date?
November 18th.
November 18th, to adopt these amendments. Two pieces that go along with that, our goal is to align these amendments with also the Public Works manual adoption on the same evening, so that chapter one kind of disappears from that and appears over in Lacey municipal code magically, at the same time, so we don't have conflicts between those two ordinances. And in addition, just from a matter of factual standpoint, the ordinance itself as drafted will look different than what's before you this evening, because we really wanted to show what was changing with this large document. The ordinance in a lot of places will be a repeal and replace for simplicity purposes, but just so that you are aware of that.
That was going to be my question, was were we going to get a second look before we needed to take a vote on it?
That's up to-
I think that's something that council would have to think about, and one of the things too, in crafting the elements coming forward is refining that language around intensification of use in the SPR chapter, reserve second.
That was the only direction change that I heard this evening, was the site plan, adding a provision for additional flexibility and-
Incorporate that language in there and bring it forward for council consideration. It doesn't mean you have to adopt it, but schedule for action, and you can take a look at it and have some more conversation about it before action.
What I think is, you know, let's go forward with this with a, because what we're talking about is just on intensification is a little bit of change in language. That's not going to be hard to come up with, but everything else, if it's within of what, what we've talked about, that's great. If there's something that had, obviously, between now and then that comes up that we hadn't talked about, you know, let's come back and, and make, you know, make sure council's aware of that. You know, if something comes in like late on, you know, we've missed something, or a bunch of, you know, letters come and say, oh, you know, this is not going to work, you know, I want, give us the flexibility to take that into consideration. But we, we got a little bit of time here, we obviously have, well, I can't believe November is next week, so we don't have a ton of time, but-
Basically three weeks, but if the council, look at all the council members that are present here tonight, if that's something comfortable moving forward, to schedule it for action with the updated language for the intensification of use. At that council meeting, council will still have the opportunity to talk about it and debate it before you take that vote. But we could bring it forth ready for that action if council so chooses.
Are you talking about the 11th or are you talking about?
No, we'll do it on the 18th and we'll go over those changes one last time and talk about on the 18th and.
And that gives you all enough time?
To do that.
You can comfortably get there, okay.
Okay, okay.
That sound good?
Sounds good. You good, Nick? Yep, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job, by the way. Great, great work, amazing, great.
And welcome to.
Welcome to the family.
Oh, yeah, thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Okay, now we're on to the storm water rate discussion, Troy. Basically, are we going to do another four and a half for another year? Yes.
Yes. Just got to get that mic first. Yeah, seven years in a row, actually. Good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you to present our proposal for storm water rates. I do recognize that says utility rates, but I thought we will take every opportunity to inform the public of all of our increases. So I'll spend a little minute there. You know, Rick did a really good job last week with his budget presentation in terms of proposed utility rates as well as already adopted utility rates. So the first three you're seeing here on the slide, these are actually already adopted. Water and wastewater were adopted in a three-year, multi-year rate back in 2025. So it's a 5.25% increase for water, 9.5% for wastewater. And the law board has adopted a 3% increase. And what we're proposing tonight, as Mary said, a 4.5% increase for storm water. We do obviously pay attention to the impact to our residents and all of our customers. So here you see an illustration of what a monthly impact will be on a typical utility rate customer in Lacey. It's a cumulative $7.26 per month. So jumping ahead to the storm water rate that's being proposed, like I said, this is the seventh year in rule at 4.5% that we're proposing. Of what you're seeing here on screen is the last comp plan recommendations for storm water rates. That comp plan covered 2020 through 2025. The city, of course, adopted all of these recommendations throughout this period. We are in the midst of updating the comp plan for storm water, but it is not completed. I think we're on the verge of getting started with the financial requirements for the storm water comp plan in the next period, but we just haven't quite gotten there yet with our consultant. So what we're proposing essentially this year or for 2026 is a continuation of that 4.5%. It's in a sense a in recognition of inflationary increases. It's also consistent with the Lacy approach to have predictable, consistent, stable rates for our customers as well as the utility itself for planning purposes. We know that inflation through this period has been higher than historical. It's also higher than where the Federal Reserve would like to see it. And I would make the argument that inflation on municipal governments is even higher than that, both in terms of operations and maintenance as well as what's happening in the construction area. You know, and if you think about the 4.5% increase, one way of looking at it is if the comp plan comes in a little bit lower than 4.5% over that period, we're going to essentially pay down that future rate increase. But on the other hand, if we guess incorrectly and this rate is too low, that means we'll have higher and steeper increases, a little bit of rate shock for customers if we don't maintain that consistent approach to rate increases. We have been ramping up our storm water requirements in terms of permits. We've also been staffing up for anticipated increased capital improvement programs as well as just kind of the constant increase to regulation within this field. So I do have a couple of slides just to kind of walk you through what the history of this utility has been dealing with recently. I'm not going to go through every one of these positions, but we've been adding positions throughout the last five, six years, really in terms of regulation as well as increased maintenance. And that doesn't change for 2026. We actually have about, we have one full-time position that's being proposed for 2026, and that's an increase to maintenance. We have increased storm water pond maintenance. We're actually behind, I think we're behind 16 ponds in terms of full rehabilitation. We also have new stormwater systems that we've taken on through annexation. And we also have, like I said, an increased capital improvement program that we're anticipating. So you heard the city manager in his presentation talk about a utility capital project position to help facilitate that. So it's about a 1.2, 1.3 increase to staffing that's being proposed in 2026. We really can't talk about storm water without talking about the storm water permit in which we operate under. I am not going to try to pretend that I could present this, but really this is an illustration of all the new regulation that's coming in this new permit period. The permit covers 2024 through 2029. But some of the focus areas in terms of new regulation is street sweeping, mapping, additional runoff regulation, and as well as environmental justice in terms of, you know, how we're applying those. These are all new. There is, my understanding, there's nothing in this permit that reduced regulation, so this is all additive. This is going to increase our workloads, probably going to increase what we're seeing in terms of staffing throughout this period. Again, this is just an illustration. We had a really in-depth presentation by Doug Christensen, our storm water manager, that he went through every chapter of this permit and basically took a timeline in every one of these regulations. This is just a snapshot of what that is. And you can see it's quite detailed. There are time deadlines throughout the different chapters of this permit. So the clock is ticking in terms of meeting these regulations. So again, that leads us to the recommendation to have basically a carryover of the last comp plan 4.5% annual increase. So you're seeing the different impacts throughout the rate classes for storm waters and across the board, 4.5%. So again, to address inflationary issues, to anticipate the additional costs that's coming to us in terms of regulation in our new storm water permit, as well as an anticipation of increased capital costs going forward. So again, 4.5% for 2026 only. We should see the rate study, the rate requirement from the consultant early next year. And you'll see the subsequent comp plan come before the council and through that process sometime next year. So if that'd be, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
I have one that's probably more for Rick than it is for you, Troy, no offense. On the tree canopy where the requirement is to map city-owned canopy and then set tree canopy goals, will this complement or maybe even help us along with our goals with the Thurston Climate Meditation Plan?
It does, it will complement because that's something as our urban forestry plan already has done. It's done to, we already mapped the urban canopy twice. The first time was a very unsophisticated effort. The second round was back in, I want to say 2019-ish, where we looked at more sophisticated using GIS work to map that canopy. And then our next update, and I think it's going to, by the end of this decade, we're required to do some more. So this will help complement that work and update regularly what that urban canopy looks like in terms of growth. And the thing is, I think you'll see that urban canopy increase because we had a lot of development that happened in between 2010 and 2018. And now you have those younger street trees that are starting to mature a little bit as well and urban forestry, so. But yeah, to answer your question shortly, yes, it will complement the work we're doing.
Great, I like it when those things can work together.
Councilor Dunning?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we had any reason from the consultant as to why they were taking longer than expected?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the delay is exactly. Yeah, I mean, these are very big updates in terms of the workload. But yeah, I don't have anything specific, so I apologize for that.
You might have had Mariner's tickets.
The only thing I'm sort of curious about, and you know, it's, we've done this and I understand the philosophy, you know, behind it. When you pass these multi-year rates, it gives some stability and some predictability and I get that. One of the issues I had, you know, looking at it when we went through this the first time on all of our utilities, to tell you the truth, is one of the things that the consultant did and we did is, one of the big drivers of these rates is our population forecast. And they specifically put in a very, very conservative number for our population forecast at the time. I remember saying, it's like, our population hasn't grown this slow, you know, in the past 25 years. I don't think it's going to grow this slow over this past, you know, or this next five, six years. And in fact, we've actually seen some record growth, you know, during this time. And so what we should know relatively easy is what the 2020 to 2025 comp plan said we were going to bring in compared to expenses. And we should have the actuals of what we brought in compared to expenses. And I'm just curious to see how close they got. Because it seems like we spent a ton of money on, to get on these consultants to usually tell us stuff that we basically almost already know for the most part, but that's a different conversation. But I, you know, we should be able to, you know, check our work on this, not only on the storm water, but also, you know, where we're at on our utility rates. Because, you know, we passed these multi-years, but we haven't had any really check-ins to see if we're on track or if we're not on track. And so I'm just, I know I've asked about this, you know, in the past. It would just be nice to sort of get a check-in, you know, and maybe where we're, the utility, you know, it's way under and our expenses are actually way, you know, a lot more than we haven't brought in as much as we should have brought in. But it'd be nice to have some idea of where we're at and if we're, you know, if we've guessed right or if we're not going forward. And we should be able to pull that information together pretty easily because they told us what, that we said we're going to bring in and how much we're going to spend, and we should have a pretty good idea of where we're at on that.
Sure, I've got a couple of slides if you'd like to see them.
Okay.
That's a really nice way to say that because I was going to ask it a whole lot shorter.
Slide 12, please. So I did do that for storm water. It's a much smaller utility, so it actually sort of does a really good exercise for me to figure out how to pull that out, so.
She knew I was going to ask this question. Pretty consistent on it.
So what you're going to see is, as Shannon brings up the slide, is by both sides, the revenue and the expenditure side, and it's only for operations. So keep that in mind as we think about. Okay, so this is the same six-year period for storm water revenues. You have the comp plan projection in blue and the actual revenues collected. That 2025 is a budget number at this point. But throughout this period, you could see that certainly in the 2020 through 24, that we did collect more than the comp plan anticipated. Cumulative through 25, it's about $3 million more over that five-year period. Whoops, I'm sorry, Shannon, can you give me slide 13? I thought you advanced to the hidden slide. It works much better on my desk. So same thing, the expenditures for storm water over that same period, same thing, comp plan in blue, actuals in red. And you could see a different picture in terms of how we projected.
In the last two years.
Underspent the first four years of this plan. In '24, you could see that we actually spent more than the comp plan. That variance in '24 is $750,000. The budgeted amount or the increase between comp plan and actuals for '25 is about $1 million. I think we will realize that, so the majority of these increases come from engineering services. And you saw that short list of positions that we've added that are dedicated to storm water. So we're going to see that departure. It's only going to get higher on the expenditure side, but we've definitely built up reserves throughout that storm water period. It's also allowed us to continue with our capital improvement plan without having to issue any debt. But yeah.
So 3 million more, but the last two years has come, take 1.7 off that 3 million?
It's about, it's about a million dollar difference underspent in terms of versus compounds, about a $4 million variance in net.
So in net, so 4 million, we've collected $4 million more than we thought we were. And you still feel comfortable doing the four, four and a half for next year when we're?
I do. The 2026 CIP is double what it was last year. We also, like I said, I know that engineering costs are quite a bit higher. It's about a $700,000 annual increase. You know, and if anything, if we guess wrong, the cash balance we have will buy down that future rate as well. It also will change the projection in case we need debt. So yeah, we were very conservative through this period, but at the same time, it's going to benefit future rates and the financial condition of the utility.
Okay, well, you know, I guess this does sort of prove my, prove my point, right? You know, we're, I know we take a conservative approach, but what that conservative approach actually means is higher rates than what we could have done. But understanding the future, and I understand why we do it, it's just, you know, it's amazing how, you know, particular the public is on, you know, anything having to do with property, you know, all these other costs associated with being the city of Lacey. But, you know, on an average year, you know, your expenses that you have on the utility side is certainly more than the 1% property tax increase that usually goes up in some cases, you know, depending, depending. But, you know, and so I just feel like it's appropriate to sort of have the same level of scrutiny. If we're going to be, you know, if the public scrutinizes so much on one end, we should be able to justify it on the other, so. But I've been pretty consistent in saying that over the years I've been here. Does anyone, anyone have any questions in four and a half percent? I think, you know, obviously logic says our inflation is going to be at least four and a half percent. So I mean, I'm fine with that as well, but it's nice to be able to check in and sort of feel like I was probably right that we were, you know, what we were projecting was probably, was a little on the high side at the time. Okay, does anyone have anything else?
When will we, you may not be able to answer, but when will we hear from this consultant to kind of check and see where we are and if we're in balance?
Yeah, I think it's first quarter next year. Yeah, I think their next step is actually look at that financial chapter.
Lenny, you got something?
Yeah, real quick, Troy, is this, is this the last year of the multi-year though, from the last study on the other utilities?
No.
2027.
2027?
Yes.
I'd like to see what you just showed us for that utility. I'd like to see what you just showed us for that utility. I'd like to see that same comparison for all of the utilities and see where we are.
Yeah, you bet I could. I could certainly do that for water. It's a little more difficult for wastewater. I'm trying to think when the last financial model that I've seen, but I could certainly bring that to the revenue hearing, which will be the next time we talk about revenues for the city, including the utilities. So I could certainly bring water back.
Sure. I know, I know it's a lot, I know it's a lot of work, you know, it's not as easy as looking about how, you know, how much money has come in compared to how much has gone out. I know it's a little more complicated than that, but I do feel like, you know, we owe it. It's the one thing I said when we, when we passed these multi-year rates, that it felt like we should at least have some check-in point to see if we were right, we were guessing right or not. And my guess is that we, you know, we've grown so much as a city, and we use such a conservative numbers on our population that is a big driver of that, of that rate, that we're probably in a very similar circumstance. Although water is a little bit different, because it's, you know, there's a lot, a lot of things go into, you know, what your summer is and so on and so forth, so it can, while, you know, it can be a little bit different. But man, we've grown a lot as a community. And so I imagine we probably are consuming more than what our model probably said we were going to, so. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Then our last agenda items are reserves discussion.
Thank you again, counsel. I'm going to have Chelsea Yorwood do most of the heavy lifting tonight, but I'm going to, going to open and close. We certainly appreciate this extra opportunity to come before you to talk about reserve designations. Typically, we come to you at a work session in December, and then we ask for the council's final recommendations at the end of December when we adopt our budget. But, you know, given the financial condition of our budget, as well as what's happening in the economy, you know, in some past, recent past discussion, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to check in with the council just to make sure that our priorities, we're on the same page with priorities, and perhaps we have a different approach and a different viewpoint on what we do with reserves. So tonight, we'd like to kind of touch on these points with you. We'll spend a little time about, you know, just kind of a definition, some background information on reserves. Talk a little bit about the, you know, condition of the budget and the economic environment. We'll have, Chelsea spent a lot of time kind of thinking about a concept in terms of how to frame the conversation. So we'll introduce perhaps a different way for council to view reserves, maybe a different way to have the discussion, have a little more clear direction in terms of priorities, and hopefully make it a little bit easier for the council to provide that direction and have conversation. We'll, we'll show you a snapshot of the current expense funds, projected balances for year-end. The current expense fund is our biggest fund. It's the fund that provides the services I think most of our citizens identify with, you know, police parks, engineering, city council, city manager, that sort of thing. So we'll kind of frame the conversation around that, but I think it's pretty, it'll still give us enough information to put together proposals for all the other funds. Again, we have 31 funds that make up our city budget, but I think we'll get enough from this conversation to help us on the staff level put together those proposals. And then we'll, we'll end the presentation with really turning it back over to council so we can receive some guidance from you as to any changes you might want to see in terms of approach for reserves for year-end 2025. So with that, I will hand things over to Chelsea.
All right, thank you. So reserves is a budget and policy term. It's described, it describes resources available outside of the budget process. So the intention is that we have reserves available should we need them if resources within the budget process are insufficient. We use reserves in a number of different ways, and you see that multiple years. And one of really basic example is the $3 million budget implementation reserve that we're intending to use in the 2026 proposed budget. And in this example, that reserve is then treated as a revenue within that budget. So reserves can be allocated and used for a number of purposes and vary by different organizations. But the basic purpose of a reserve is to reduce volatility and uncertainty in two main ways. So the first way is to respond to significant unplanned unavoidable costs or revenue losses, which is kind of similar to like an insurance policy. A second way is to allocate dollars for large, non-recurring planned future expenditures, which could be more similarly compared to a savings account. So there are two different ways that we can approach reserves. With the current economic environment, we're seeing expenses significantly outpacing revenues. We're seeing that a number of our revenue streams are subject to fluctuations. So an example would be sales tax, which is largely dependent on consumer spending. We've also seen that our revenues tend to be relatively flat over time. And lastly, it's no surprise that construction activity has started to level off as anticipated, which limits our one-time funding resources. So given the current economic environment, it's essential to spend some time, like Troy mentioned, looking at the city's priorities to ensure that they still align with our approach to reserves. So we're looking at a potential modified approach. The factors on the prior slide underscore kind of the importance of prudent fiscal management and the need to prioritize core needs. The indicators are pointing towards placing emphasis on maintaining and optimizing existing assets rather than pursuing expansion. And careful evaluation should be used for all future projects for that long-term impact for each decision. So it's not just the construction costs that we're seeing. We're also agreeing then to all the future costs that will happen in perpetuity, such as utility, custodial, grounds maintenance, repair, and all of those things that come forever on. So this slide, as Troy mentioned, is very specific to the current expense fund. It's a history of committed reserves since 2015. It does a great job of illustrating our current reality. So the city, as you can see, has enjoyed a number of years of high construction or one-time related resources and interest income. The committed reserves were set aside for large-scale projects and initiatives, and then they've also been spent for those very purposes. For a number of the years presented, though, we were afforded the opportunity to expand. But as we've been discussing, the economic environment is changing, and we have utilized a large portion of those reserves that were kind of in that middle section. We've done a really good job of matching one-time revenues through reserves with one-time expenses, such as for projects like the police station in Keel Park. But given the current reality, council may want to consider adjusting the reserve focus from expansion to preservation and maintenance. This is specific to preservation and maintenance. This slide is the same fund, but it's a history of the committed reserves related to facility repair and equipment replacement. It very closely resembles the trend from the prior slide. The main point here is that we're down to just about $400,000 of reserves set aside for repairs and replacements. And considering the size and complexity of the city's non-utility facilities and equipment, that amount is likely inadequate, and plus, our facilities and equipment are definitely aging. So we're going to talk a little bit more about the details of how we come to the reserve amounts that are available for council to designate. So this slide shows both '24 and '25, but I'm just focused on '25. We started with $47 million of available cash and investments. However, not all of those funds are available for designation. First, we have to remove the restricted reserves from that balance. And restricted in this scenario just means it's already been predetermined. Examples are like donor restricted contributions, opioid funds that we've received, drug seizures, and there's a whole list on the slide. So this, when we remove all those, that gives us a usable cash and investment balance of just under $44 million. But from there, we need to remove funds that are speculated as reserve per policy, or we've already predetermined that they're going to be used with the current year for priorities. This gives us the actual usable cash and investment balance of just over $16 million. But we can't stop there. So we also know that we intend to use some of those cash and investments in our 2026 proposed budget. So again, looking at that $3 million budget implementation reserve that we talked about, we know that we're intending to use that in 2026. So in the end, when we looked at all the stuff proposed in '26, the council has just under $11.5 million of cash and investments that can be committed in the current expense fund. This process occurs every year. So this slide presents the status of the committed and assigned from last year as we anticipate them through the 2026 proposed budget. These reserve balances are either committed or assigned. So committed is done at the council level, and assigned is done with kind of the management level, with city manager and finance director. They're broken out into 19 different priorities, and you're pretty familiar with these reserves. I won't spend a whole lot of time in the details, just a point of reference for now, but we'll come back to it. So the current approach that we just looked at is based on function. So of what was on the screen, you saw economic development priorities, law enforcement, parks, and just a few others. It lacks big-picture priority themes and is more tailored to one-off needs. Oftentimes, operational costs end up being embedded in those reserves, too. So some examples are the rapid response team, body and fleet cameras, energy conservation. Those really should have their own resources available within the operating budget rather than relying on one-time reserves. So we're kind of looking at a different approach for the future. So creating broad categories to inform more focused discussion, which I'll talk about more in a little bit. And then utilizing a framework that accommodates future priorities, as well as applying benchmark ranges for each reserve to gauge and communicate reasonableness. So some of the possible priority categories that we've been looking at are going to be the next handful of slides, and I'll just explain each one. So capital maintenance and asset preservation is one. This would fund repair, replacement, and upkeep of existing infrastructure. It would prioritize extending the life of current assets over building new ones. Another would be the revenue stabilization. This would temporarily bridge structural budget gaps caused by ongoing imbalances between revenues and expenditures. It would provide time and flexibility while long-term solutions are developed without resorting disruptive or reactive cuts. Another one would be comprehensive and capital facility plan priorities. This would ensure the ability to meet future capital needs without relying on inconsistent or emergency funding sources. It would allow for sustainable, cost-effective infrastructure investments that align with long-term goals to grow and function efficiently over time. Another one is economic development strategies and investments. This would fund initiatives that stimulate local economic growth, attract and retain businesses, expand the tax base, or support workforce development. It would also signal a proactive approach to improving the local economy rather than relying solely on tax increases. Another one we could look at is innovation. This would fund initiatives that improve efficiency, reducing long-term costs or adapting to changing needs. So this would be a proactive investment that could help curb future O and M growth and reliance on new funding sources. So examples would be energy efficiency and technology upgrades. Another one could be human and social services. This would support critical human and social service needs, especially during economic downturns or emergencies. It would provide dedicated reserves that allow for proactive responses without pulling funds from essential operations or capital projects, those kinds of things. And then lastly, we have sustainability as another potential. This would support environmental initiatives and practices. It would align financial strategy with commitment to the environment. And then catastrophic event. So this would safeguard the organization's long-term health and ability to navigate through emergencies. It would help prepare for unexpected and large-scale events ranging from natural disasters to the pandemic, to cyber attacks and things like that. Okay, so we're throwing this slide, I guess, illustration back on the screen so that you have it just for another quick point of reference. This, let's go to the next slide. Yeah, so this slide uses the possible categories I just mentioned, and it uses the ones that were on the kind of grouping that was on the screen just previously and puts it into this model or this modified framework concept. So all 19 of those items are now distributed amongst these eight categories for a big-picture discussion and priority setting. Later on, we'll ask for your guidance on specific categories, but in the meantime, this is just illustrating the concept. So this, this is a look at the same structure with a five-year average built in for comparison. So some things to note, especially now that we have utilized our $3 million budget implementation or are intending to for the 2026 budget, is we have some, some gaps in our reserves from kind of what we've seen historically. And so that revenue stabilization, that $3 million would have been sitting there, but we intend to use it. Some other areas that are potentially underfunded, so to speak, compared to a five-year average is that economic development strategy and investments, and also the capital maintenance and asset preservation. It's important to keep in mind that, as we saw from those graphs earlier on, that the last five years had pretty strong increases to resources and our availability to reserve. So we can't compare apples to oranges. We have less money to go around now and to be designated in reserve, so we understand that. And this is really just a matter of how council wants to allocate available dollars according to these types of priorities at this point in time.
So it's late and I'm tired, but why does allocating specific amounts of money into specific reserve categories matter? Because we can shift reserve funds around as needed, right? So if we're setting aside $400,000 for capital maintenance, but we know our realistic experience rating would suggest we need more like almost $2 million in there, and that, like, the bill's come due next year after we've passed the budget, we can just move the money. So like, why does it matter so much what buckets we put these in, in the reserves?
And I'm, I'm really following you, too. You know, historically, where we've made these decisions is every budget, right? I mean, every time we get to in the budget, we really have relied on Troy to see where we're at, where are things coming? And then we talk about budgets, and we, at that time, sort of allocate it based on what we know is coming up. You know, and you have a better idea of what that is than we do, because you know what ongoing expenses are. I think, I like, I appreciate the putting this into categories, and so it looks maybe better on a spreadsheet. But when it really comes right down to it, I guess the direction we need to give is one, and, you know, every year, we should probably max, you know, put as much money back into the the budget category, because we have no, you know, because that's the one that fluctuates more year to year. You know, is $3 million the right number? I don't know what that number is, but that should probably be the first thing that gets replenished. And then after that, you know, we've all, we've always said economic development should get replenished as well, but we haven't really seen that number be drawn down very much year after year. So that's been another conversation, but tell me, tell me where we're missing here.
So, no, you're not. And that's kind of the conversation, we want to have council have some of that guidance, because we can come back with recommendations where this kind of move money around where we see needs coming up. But part of that, it's also where the council priorities, the council has that priority conversation. So what I heard the mayor say, you know, one of the first things from his perspective is, you know, making sure that the stabilization reserve, budget policy reserve is, you know, met first. Then we know how we can start looking at monies and moving things around to come back with, here's our recommendation balancing what we have, what we anticipate in the council priorities. And, and of course, you look at that list, and, you know, the capital maintenance and asset preservation, facility maintenance, you know, that's, that reserve's getting down, and that's an important thing going forward. We're going to have to look and address it, but where we pull that from and prioritize from something else.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it has to be budget, policy, implementation, has to be the first that gets, gets the reserves, because that is the one thing that prevents us year over year to having these big layoffs or whatever. It's like, you know, we have a buffer in there that we know, and that has to be the first thing we should, you know, we need to make sure it comes whole the next year. But we've done that, we've done that. I mean, I don't see that we're doing anything out of normal, although I guess we have less overall revenue, you know, less overall reserves, and so now we have to start getting a little, little finer pencil. little finer pencil on, on what we're going to assign it to, but you know, I've always had pretty, a lot of faith in Troy to figure that, figure that out for us because he's the expert and we're not, you know? I think we can give some overall guidance, budget, you know, the budget policy implementation has to be number one, I think, for the future councils, you know? I think that's a pretty easy one to say that needs to go first. And then depending on how much reserves we have left over, I guess we can start figuring out what, what is the most, where should we focus those dollars on, but.
And this isn't a new conversation. We have this conversation year after year.
Every year.
And it's just, you know, Chelsea and Troy put it together in a different framework, so it kind of has a little bit more context instead of a bunch of different items that you have, it's clustered in the buckets.
Exactly.
And so I think it's a little easier for all of, for the council as well as the public of where you kind of base your priorities. In the past, you'd have capital maintenance and asset preservation, but that might be different amounts and different funds spread throughout the different budget lines. So this is kind of consolidated into an easier thing to kind of look at and say, okay, here's where we are, here's where we want to focus those reserves and make sure that we have the ability to either, you know, maintain the maintenance and asset preservation, economic development, or present reserves and innovation. Because also, we talked about the need for technology innovation. That, that takes some, some capital to be able to onboard new technology, and that's another piece that it's kind of balancing those different priorities and what we can do.
I think it makes a lot of sense, and it not only helps organize it, it helps with transparency. It makes it a lot easier for the public, I think, to understand. But I think it also reflects kind of the direction the council has set, too, about priorities, and so, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, and we do that, we're just, every year, it's just, we do it in a little different manner. And if we, if we want to, I think, you know, put that, those dollar amounts under these different labels, I think that, that's fine. But I think what, what it comes down to is, is on, when this limited amount of reserves we have at the moment, what should be the priorities first and foremost? And I think it's, I think we, I think you would also say it needs to be budget implementation has to be the number one. And then we can go down after that, what's, what, what needs to be, what's the next, you know, what makes sense from there, but that for sure has to be the first one. And I don't know if that three million is a right number going forward or not, you know? Maybe that needs to be five million. I, I don't know, but I think you have a better idea than I do.
We'll be coming back in, in November for a finer discussion, but this is to start that conversation, have multiple.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Well, I'm. I know you have a lot more to go through here, but.
I'm fighting my instincts here, and it's, the full circle timing of this is kind of funny. I was just telling Chelsea this morning, I go, the council explains things the way that nobody can understand. And I think Councilmember Cox actually did my work for me in terms of why we do this, in terms of the question for Councilmember Vasquez. This is a reporting issue, a financial reporting issue. It's under governmental accounting standards boards, issued number fifty-four.
Yeah.
You probably remember back in two thousand.
Very well.
Or somewhere around there, we have one of that. So this is a, this is a communication tool. This is us, the city, the council communicating to the public what our priorities are. It's a transparency issue as well. So this goes into the face of our financial statements. There are, there are no disclosures that talk about this in detail. In fact, every single committed reserve you have gets listed in our financial statement. So it's an important tool to, to communicate what it is your intent is and your vision for the city. So thank you, Councilmember Cox, for that.
So I, I know you're not quite through. You might have a couple more slides left, I'm sorry.
This is just a different look at it. So we, I mentioned benchmarks earlier on. This looks at potential benchmarks that we could use going forward into the future. At this time, we know that we can't meet these, but it's just something to strive towards. So you'll notice that all these benchmarks are proposed as ranges. A range includes a floor that communicates that there's a minimum amount necessary to be a good steward of the community, but there's also a ceiling, and that ceiling's important, too, because it also communicates there's an upper limit to usefulness of these reserves and a point at which excess resources could be devoted to some other purpose. And so this is just, again, something to strive for if this is the route we take going forward. And yeah, to kind of everyone's point, this was just a framework to have a conversation because the intention is, is once we know where your priorities lie, then we'll come back in December and we'll come to you with a more detailed list like you're used to seeing. We just wanted to know your priorities for this evening, and that's, that's all I had. I know Troy has a few more slides to go through, so thank you.
Sure. So in terms of timeline, I, I spoke to this at the beginning of the presentation. You know, tonight, we're looking for high-level discussion and guidance from the council and that will help inform staff, you know, where to, where to go in terms of the detailed proposal that's scheduled to come before you on December ninth, and then we'll go through a normal process on December sixteenth in terms of ordinance approval. It's, it's nice to hear that, you know, I think we saw a lot of head nods in the council that, you know, these categories, these body categories seem to capture the, kind of the essence of past conversations that council have had, and these do seem to fit really well with what the council's done in the past, so it does seem to be a pretty good framework in terms of that conversation. You know, going back to the, to Chelsea's earlier slide, you know, in terms of, you know, what we've done in the past, and the mayor's actually spoken to it really well. We've really focused on economic development. We focused on that, the budget stabilization reserve. We've also focused on sustainability, so, you know, after the first year when we actually know our cash balances, those are discussions that the city manager and I have as to making sure we kind of match the council priority. If that's changed, that would be good to hear tonight. But we've also heard as recently as the budget workshop back in September, that discussion about shifting from new facilities to preservation, just given the, the condition of our budget and our reserves. And you could see there's a bit of a mismatch there if you look at the, the third category there, the capital facility plan. You know, we have nine million dollars there, and we'll have four hundred thousand at this point for capital maintenance and equipment replacement. So, you know, in terms of framing that discussion, that might be, you know, something good to hear from the council if you want to see that shift, if we want to put more of an emphasis on preservation, where does that, where should we look to first in terms of reduction to increase that? So maybe that's hopefully a framework for the council to give us guidance. I'm happy to go back to any slide that might be more valuable for you to help with your discussion, but the discussion we've heard so far has been valuable, too.
The only thing, and I've been partial about this for a very long time, and I understand where we're at as a community, where we need to focus a little bit more on what we have, maintain what we have than anything new. But sixteen years, years and years and years ago, we put in a committed reserve for the fifty-seven hundred Pacific property improvements, half a million dollars, and it's sat there. Hasn't grown, hasn't done, and it's just sitting there for, you know, on a committed reserve, that's the new museum and cultural center, you know? And I know council has given, gotten a little bit of an update on our strategies for fundraising and other things going forward. You know, I, I wish we would have had discussions, especially along the ways where we've had all these years of massive, you know, with really good, you know, reserves. If we, you know, would have added, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand or a, a, some sort of set number to that, we'd be a lot closer to seeing the realization of, of a, what's been a long-term priority, you know, for the, for the council on a new museum and cultural center, we'd be a lot closer to that than we are now. And so my worry is, at some point, if, if the fundraising happens on one side, there's still a commitment from the city on the other, and we haven't built up any of that commitment on our side. And so I, I feel like we need to be a little more strategic on something like as important and something's been talked about for this many years, of at least setting something such, like growing that fund, even if it's just small year after year, at least we're heading towards the right direction.
Isn't the bucket that has nine million dollars in it, the bucket that we would use for setting aside money for the museum?
We could.
So that is currently the bucket that has the most money in it.
Yeah. And that's, 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 you got the, you know, the police station, vacate the police station in there, you got city hall in there, you got some shop operation facilities in there. So there's a whole bunch, and animal services as well, which is also of need. So that's part of the conversation I think council are going to need to have going into next year is looking at those, those commitments because you can't undo the past decision to how we built that fund up, but also, too, look going forward with what we have in resources, how do we look at that? And you're right, there's part of the funding strategy for like the museum project is try to get around a million and a half of, of community support for it, and then that would be the matching thing, part to get the city to make up the rest. We're not prepared to have that yet or not, but, but that's going to be some future conversation we're going to have next year with council, and it's part of this effort is how do we look at these future projects and start prioritizing what do we need in facilities?
Councilmember Green, say.
Two, a couple of things. One, I have to agree with the mayor on the budget stabilization would be priority one. I have to disagree pretty strongly with us putting any money into funding for the museum in the current Congress. I mean, I think that would physically be irresponsible for us to do it, it's one of the far greater, more important, that's what we want to need, my thought. But I think asset preservation is the other thing that I think we have to make sure we're funding for, because that has to be critical. So I think those two may be the two top priorities.
Well, and I, I agree, Lenny. I, there's, there's no chance of us building the museum in a, in a very short horizon, but.
I don't think we've had this public support that we, I mean, you know, there's a lot of talk about public support, but I haven't seen any money raised on the public side here.
Well, there has, there has been money raised, and there's a, there's a plan to raise the rest, but there has to be a, a commitment if we're going to, you know, go forward with that, we should, we, there has been opportunities to set that aside where that number wouldn't be nearly as daunting as it is today, you know? And so I just think we need to think a little more strategically long-term, and I agree, let's go off with our, our major, you know, the budget has to be number one and maintain assets have to, you know? All, all these things are, are really important, but I, I, I don't think we'll ever get, you know, make any process, progress if we don't at least put something, a small number aside year after year on what is, you know, a, something that's been talked about for, for a long, long time, where we'll never, we'll never get there. So, but I, I think we're heading in the right direction. Again, I, I've had a lot of confidence in Troy to figure out what those actual numbers should be at the end of the day, but I think we've been pretty, pretty, you know, consistent on, it has to be our, our budget policy implementation has to be the first thing that we prioritize. The, the economic development side, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, it was a, something that I really wanted to be in our budget, and we finally got in the budget, and it was, you know, it's been ten years ago, and we, we haven't seen, it, it has been helpful over the years, right? I mean, that's where we use the money out of that to, for our program during COVID to give our, our grant program. Now, that all got reimbursed, but.
And that fund was replenished.
Replenished, but we had it there, you know, but since then, we haven't seen a consistent year after year of trying to draw that down, make a big difference, and then replenish it.
A lot of these, these funds, one of the pieces of, they've been used every year, Makerspace and night market activities. There's funds dedicated out of there for improvements at that location. There's also a couple of other initiatives that came out of there, but at the year end, that would be replenished to make whole. That's why you kind of see that consistent balance year after year, but it has been utilized. Now, to its full extent, we're waiting to make sure we have flexibility for that project or need that can help tip something over the edge for economic development reasons. And again, we've talked about developing that strategy for implementation so we can refine and make sure we're purposely using those dollars for what the council sees as most beneficial. So we'll be bringing that back in December, that economic development strategy that will hopefully inform council how we can use those dollars going into twenty twenty-six and beyond to create that economic development investments.
So several of these funds we've seen have really good or decent balances year over year, and balances that don't really tend to get drawn down like maybe we thought they would, right? And within some of those funds, I wouldn't, I, I would, I would recommend that we, of course, do the budget and the assets, but there are some of these funds that we could move to, you know, get the ball rolling in some other areas. The only ones that I would be hesitant about, you know, removing from are any one that we might have an ILA with another jurisdiction, or, or we've already, you know, obviously committed to, to something that we're going to be using that. But, you know, like the economic development strategy and investment fund, you know, if, if we, if we were to set like a cap on it of one point six seven five, then we could take the balance above that and, and, and turn it to revenue stabilization to put something in that fund. I don't, I don't, I don't know that we would draw down, you know, one point six seven five in a given period prior to any kind of replenishment, but we should be looking at trying to balance out some of these other funds with the excess so that we are putting in monies in the right, right places.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, when you really look at this, the only big questions I have, I mean, the, the capital equipment replacement, I mean, that seems like a small, small number. It's, it's the capital facilities plan implementation, and we have committed and assigned, right? That's the dollars that we just don't know about, right? I mean, capital, capital facilities plan is a big, big plan, and that's, we, and that number, like, that's not even close to what we actually need for that, but we, we really have had that long-term conversation of where we're at on our capital facilities and, and, you know, what's going to look like going forward. And until we have that conversation, it's tough to figure out what, are those the right numbers in there for implementation or not?
And, and as I think council recall, in the twenty twenty-five budget, we put aside two projects, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each to do the more refined space study for the, the operation center as well as city hall to get a little bit better understanding what those needs are. With Jazzcom's been working hard on the, what's the scope and design of that animal services building? The challenge there is where you, you know, I think what the deputy mayor's referring to is in terms of their local agreements and partnerships. At some point, there's going to be a fixed app building, and the partners are going to come together and need to figure out how to finance that, so we need to prepare for that.
Well, for example, we, we have three million dollars set aside for, for joint animal service in a committed reserve. Do any of our partner jurisdictions have three million dollars set aside in their budgets?
I don't know.
Right.
I mean, that's a big, we have three million dollars, a big number.
Yeah, we have.
But we don't know.
Well, we should, we should have that answer, and if, if we're the only jurisdictions that's sitting, putting three million dollars in committed reserve that the other jurisdictions are not even getting close to.
But going back to the, I think, the original point, you have a capital facilities plan that we talked about at length that has a lot of projects on there, that has a lot of needs in, in the city, and trying to figure out how we make sure we can continue those facilities and good repair, provide the service, and then what else can we prioritize that funding for?
Are these, are these interest-bearing accounts?
All of it.
All of it is?
All of it.
And the interest just goes right back onto the balance? Or does it go to somewhere else?
It goes back to the funds in which own the cash, so, in a roundabout way, yes.
Okay.
I mean, and that city hall reserve, you know, we, it's been committed reserve forever. It's, you know, it's down to that number, but it was a much bigger number for over the years. We've slowly drawn down on it for, for whatever, you know, here and there, but I'm sure that's where we're, we're, we're taking the money out for the elevator, right?
And that's why we only did one of the elevators, so we can just make sure we have some capacity in case something happens that we need to have an emergency repair or something.
So I think what could be helpful is for us to take a look at what we have committed and assigned right now, and the reasoning behind that, and then, does that still make sense today or, or not? And, and we can adjust from there, but that's going to take. But that's going to take a, kind of a longer conversation of, of why we came up with those numbers.
Well, I think this conversation is very helpful because again, we're going to come back in, in November for another work session to kind of talk through and we can kind of put, Troy and I can work together and kind of make some recommendations and kind of finer point, but we need to have this first conversation, one, to kind of introduce this new way of categorizing this so it's a little easier to kind of know where things go. And then, and then two, kind of get some general direction so we can start putting pen to paper and, and figuring out what, what we can see are the needs of the, the city and the council priorities.
I mean, before, we had a lot more sitting in unassigned reserves, right? I mean, because look at all that money that we were able to put towards the, the police station. I mean, that was all, that wasn't all in a committed reserve. That was.
Yeah, there were so many different funding sources for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it was not defined, like in the arterial street fund, the, the real estate excise tax, it wasn't defined as you, as you're saying.
Does the law require that the, the interest accumulated on these accounts go back directly to that account or is there a way that we could funnel that?
It goes back in the current expense. It's all in the current expense.
Yeah, there's some, in fact, that's something I've been trying to research in my free time is exactly that. How can we take monies from a capital fund that's earned, have that go back into operations? Because one finance director's opinion is the money originates from that current expense fund.
Has to go.
We transfer it into a building fund and then it sits there. Like the, the police station's a really good example. We are on tracking expenditures to the day because of our bond requirements in terms of our arbitrage rebate. So like I said, I take every expenditure, calculate a daily interest on that and it's substantial interest that's being earned right now in the building fund.
Sure.
My original thought was, let's find a way to get that back into operations to help fund our daily operations since we know the police station's a fixed cost.
Yeah.
There's not an inflationary cost there, so I haven't found anything, I haven't found anything that says like we can't do that. I like to, when I look at things, find positive, you know, or definitive permission, so to speak, to do that. But I've been talking to our investment advisor a little bit. There's not other cities that have a policy to do that, which gave me a little bit of pause. But again, I can't see anything that says we can't move it back into the operating.
I don't think, I don't think a lot of other cities are, are, have been in the same position where we had the reserves that we do either. So, I mean, but, okay, well, I, I think we're, I guess we're headed in the right direction. It's, I think it's going to take some more conversation and, and, and talk about really some, you know, you almost have to go through every committed and assigned reserve and, and, and talk about does it, does it make sense or does it need to be moved to something else? But we'll have to just go through that process.
Is your, is your suggested range based on some, is it, is it, is it kind of like based on some historical spending habit that we've had or where you've seen money outflow into something that we were trying to accomplish?
Yeah, there's not a lot of concrete guidance. The one that seems to be an industry standard is the, the facility maintenance and repair. We've seen that in utilities as an example. So our utility comp plans assume a 2% reserve for that very purpose. And the reason behind that is infrastructure typically has about a 50-year life. So think of a water line being in the ground for 50 years and operational depreciation over that life is 2% per year. So if you're actually saving 2% a year, you have the cash at the end of that useful life to replace that. So that's where that comes from. But the rest is really, it's not, there isn't any real concrete guidance, but Chelsea did a really deep dive in terms of other financial associations and what other municipalities might be doing. And they seem to be kind of best practices, but nothing concrete in terms of like a 2% per year that matches depreciation.
Got you, got you. Okay, if there's, anyone else have any, any questions?
I just have one little suggestion. If it is kosher to reserve the interest for a particular thing, might the little bit of interest we would earn on the account that the new cultural center museum would be in could be directly applied to that account? So you, at least you're growing it a little bit and it's, you know, accumulating until, until the economy is stronger.
I mean, I think that's the, the least we, we could have been doing over these years and we, we'd be in a much better position to, at some point, take advantage of that opportunity. But if we do nothing, I, I don't suggest us doing nothing. I, I think either we have to make a decision, we're not, we're not going to go forward with the project, you know, and, and, and get the half million dollars and say, you know, well, you know, we tried our best, it's not going to happen. Or we're going to say, we're going to actually try to do something year over year to at least increase that, you know, by a small part. Otherwise, it just doesn't make sense for us, you know, here we are all these years later and if we would just put a little bit aside plus interest and everything else, you know, we've been locked, you know, we could maybe built it by now, so. But we didn't, we haven't done it. We, you know, we just have, it's just sat there, that half million just sat there year after year and nothing's happened to it, so. But I think we're heading in the right direction. Obviously, we'll have some more detailed, you know, reserve discussion in, in December and obviously as we go to approve our committed reserves, that's going to happen for our budget as we do every year. So I think we're on our, I think we're on our way and I think we've given you at least a little idea of, of, of what are the most priorities at, at the moment going, going forward. But I think we're going to have to have a lot more conversation over our capital facilities plan priorities. That's the, that's the big one because it has the, obviously has the largest chunk of dollars in it right now, but there's a lot of uncertainty within that as well, so. Okay. Well, with that, we have finally reached our agenda, but it was a really long meeting. So without objections, I'm going to call this work session adjourned and everyone be safe out there. It's been kind of crazy with our weather and everything else and Halloween this weekend, so happy Halloween to everyone.
And remember next week, remember next week's council meeting is on Monday, the 3rd? It's going to be out of the norm, so.
We're having dinner. So, yeah, next, next Monday, we're going to have our information dinner ahead of time and the, the meeting after that on Monday, not Tuesday. So everyone have a happy, safe Halloween and as always, you keep it classy lazy.